I wish to reopen the July 29, 2019 Harwich Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We did go into executive session to discuss a parcel of land at Deacon's Fawley Road and didn't reach a... we're going to keep that discussion going, so we're back to regular meeting now. Let me, as required by law, by oath of meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to start of the meeting, if anyone is interested in doing so. If not, we'll move to the next agenda item, the Pleasure of Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the inter-republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In terms of weekly briefing, Chief, I'd like to start with a... see, Police Chief is here, I don't see... oh, Fire Chief is here. Give us a rundown on the... on this excitement of the tornado.
Well, if everybody recalls, you know, one of the more exciting things in my forty-plus years in the fire service is tanker rollovers. You seem to forget about, we had a gasoline tanker rollover last week with 12,000 gallons of gasoline in front of Shaw's, which could have been a catastrophe certainly not affecting as much of the town, but certainly would have affected many, many residents. So I think it's only right that I give the board and some folks a rundown on what that emergency was. It was about four o'clock in the morning, and the incident was 12,000 gallons of gasoline, tanker overturned on Sisson Road with no entrapment. The initial response was two fire trucks, one ambulance, a deputy chief, that was nine people. The initial actions were to block the roadway, remove the driver from the immediate area, block the storm drains to prevent spread of the leak, and remove potential ignition sources. Initial resources requested was the Chief of the Department, Eversource, State Hazmat, Howard DPW with sand and a loader, and recall all off-duty people. Resources that assisted us on Sisson Road: Eastham, Chatham, Brewster, Dennis, Yarmouth, Hyannis, Wareham Fire Departments, State Hazmat Team with twenty technicians, four TOM units, which is a Technical Operation Module truck, and the Department of Fire Services Rehab Unit. You saw that rehab unit, some of you, at the middle school of the... where the staging area was. The Red Cross canteen, troops need to eat. Howard's Police, Howard's Water Department, Howard's Department of Public Works, the Howard Harbor Master, gasoline got into the marsh. Howard's Board of Health, Howard's Engineering, Howard's Conservation Department, Chatham Police, which was the part of the Cape Cod Regional Law Enforcement Council Crash Reconstruction Team, Brunswick County Sheriff's Office, helped with the criminal investigation, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, United States Coast Guard, Massachusetts State Police, Shaw's Supermarket, Brunswick County All Hazardous Incident Management Team, and Carl Jacobs, who was a retired firefighter from Dennis, who we can rely on for his professionalism with a drone. He was able to help us see how far the gasoline plume had gone. And Edge Environmental, which provided with a licensed site professional, LSP, and Global Remediation was the contractor in least... and last but certainly not least was Buckles Towing. The immediate impact was 4,000 gallons of fuel in the roadway. Manholes, catch basins, tidal marsh, loss of power to approximately 200 customers, closure of Route 28, closure of the businesses on Sisson Road, Herald Street, and Route 28. Long-term impact is that the roadway has damage and will need to be repaired, environmental pollution and cleanup, and loss of revenue to those businesses. We don't know what that environmental impact is going to be, but I will tell you, it will be significant. Outcomes and concerns: We lost 4,000 gallons of fuel that night instantly, and by the end of the day, 2,000 gallons had been recovered, and none of the remaining 8,000 gallons in the tanker were lost during the operation. It was necessary to disconnect that high-voltage line because the tanker landed right upside down underneath the primaries there. So it was very crucial that we cut that power, and as we learned last week, or earlier this week, Eversource stepped up and was very quick to isolate circuits to make that area safe. While we did request a lot of foam, firefighting foam to the scene, none was used. The result was less contamination and environmental impact. The road, as I mentioned before, the roadway and water system had been damaged. An overwhelming response by the Howard Fire Department and our mutual aid partners resulted in a very smooth operation with no significant problems or injuries. And I can't say enough about the cooperation with our town partners. The Howard Police was right there on scene with the initial response, and they were incredible. One would say, why didn't it blow up? Larry, you're a scientist. That's why I said, why didn't it sing "Blow Up"? But believe it or not, there was so much gasoline...
You need a mixture of air with the gasoline.
What's that?
You need a proper mixture of air and gasoline.
And, all right, now here's the test. Why did that not happen? Why was there no ignition?
It was too rich.
There's too much gas.
Right, that's what I said, you have to have proper air for it to blow.
Too much.
I just want to...
Any other test questions?
Please pass that. I'm going to explain what that is.
The operation was one of mitigate the hazardous materials, the gasoline. The gasoline had to be pumped off the truck, and it was a responsibility of the Howard Fire Department with mutual aid help to protect those hazmat technicians who climbed on that tanker, knowing full well that there was at least 8,000 gallons sitting there, and that was what was between them and 8,000 gallons. Five plugs were drilled in that tanker to remove the gasoline and to pump off into other tankers. The hazmat chief, it was a regional hazmat team, they come from all over this part of the state, but the control chief of the hazmat team was from Wareham. And he said, "Good news is, if you don't show up and the thing's on fire, data shows that it probably won't spontaneously catch fire." I said, "That's good news."
Except for the word "probably."
Probably. Probably. Okay. Then the second part was, as I was standing beside him about twenty feet from this gasoline tanker, he says, "We're going to drill five holes. If we don't have any problem with that first hole, we'll probably be okay." That's the plug from the first hole, and I'll keep that with me forever. Any questions?
Just a fantastic job.
The troops, everybody did a great job. That was something that you don't see too often in your career. You know, I've been involved in two. The first one was on Great Western Road, but that was fuel oil, different situation. This was gasoline. So it was very dangerous. Everybody was professional and obviously did their jobs. So that's my report on the tanker. I'd like the plug back.
Are you... Yeah. I think Chief here and talk about the tornado, but what strikes me is...
Yes, and then I think the Fire Chief will probably back me up on this, but just let me start by saying, I really couldn't be prouder of the personnel of the Howard Police Department and all of our, you know, mutual aid and the Fire Department. Really was a tremendously smooth operation considering how violent... it was very short-lived, but it was very violent, and it resulted in all of the major roadways in town being blocked. And the Fire Chief and I, I heard the Fire Chief first on the radio requesting power be shut down to the entire town, and I thought to myself, "That's a pretty good idea." So we tried to get it accomplished, but turns out you can't do that. They will shut off sectors, but when it was over, there was about 93% power outage, but still, the emergency workers have to assume that all those lines are live, which is why it takes so much time to clear roadways. So at that point in time, immediately after it went over, it became readily apparent that we needed to request large amounts of line crews and tree crews into town because we could not get anywhere in emergency response. We had some officers trying to get to the station, and it took them an hour via side roads and everything else. But just from my observations, and this was clearly a first for me, I mean, I was working during Hurricane Bob in the Police Department, but this was an entirely different scenario. And the ease and professionalism, which I watched the departments transition into emergency operations, was truly impressive. And again, you know, the thanks goes to all those people that were actually out there on the ground doing the work. And, you know, by the end of the week, we had multiple agencies, as many of you saw, I'm sure, not the least of which the National Guard, MassDOT, Mass Department of Corrections was huge. They brought in about over eighty people a day to do that. Chipper crews from adjoining communities as far away as Sitewett, Mansfield, I think Falmouth, and other... you know, the governor, when he came down, mobilized multiple state agencies. So MassDOT, National Guard, Mass Department of Corrections, MWRA, Department of Fire Services were there. They also provided their rehab truck that we ended up working out of. You know, local emergency management also was deeply involved, and Deputy Chief Tom Gagnon, retired Deputy Chief Tom Gagnon, took the overnight in the AOC. So, you know, we activated the AOC immediately on Tuesday, and that worked very well, too. You know, that's the model to handle an incident of this size in character, and you rely on basically, you know, bringing in department heads and representatives from all the major areas that are going to be involved in managing the incident, and they have face-to-face communication, and then they have communication with their people out in the field, and that worked very well for a couple days. And then we transitioned over to the Cultural Center, which was basically, it became a DPW operation assisted by the FD and PD. We provided representatives in the command post at staging, and the daily events at staging basically consisted of all the state assets coming in. They would check in with a rep from the DPW, Chris Nickerson, who was absolutely astounding. I watched him work for a number of days in dealing and making contact with each one of those assets, and deploying them out across the town. I don't want to speak for the DPW, but I think by the end, I had a somewhat of a decent understanding of how they did it. They basically took their ice and snow model and applied that, the grid map that they use for ice and snow, to debris removal. And I think by Sunday, we were about 80% clear. So it was a tremendous operation, extremely, extremely smooth. And again, I cannot sing the praises enough of the personnel of Howard Police and Fire and DPW and all the other departments that worked together to accomplish this in really a very, very short amount of time. Because when I finally got a chance to get out and drive around after it went over, I was like, "This is going to take weeks." And actually, we did it. We stand here six days later, and the majority of the work is done. There's pockets here and there, but I would say it was a tremendous effort all the way around, and we can't thank the state enough either for deploying their assets down. So that's a brief rundown on it. I didn't know if there were any questions.
Couldn't agree more. It was just remarkable. I've gotten letters, emails, saying what a great job y'all did. I'm not going to read them tonight, just there's more than I want to take time for, but just the appreciation of the community is fantastic. And we often don't have a lot good to say about Eversource, but they stepped up through the plate as well.
Extraordinary. I failed to mention that.
And, you know, I think they were in constant communication to, when they did the areas and, you know...
Yes, we actually had three reps from Eversource in our AOC by Tuesday night, and they stayed there until we were back at 100%. So that is something that we usually do not experience. They usually have reps up the MAC and the county multi-agency coordination center, but this... the model worked very, very well for power restoration and debris cleanup. So I was really, truly impressed and humbled by the amount of work that everybody on the ground was doing.
You know, let's face it, we were blessed to have that much damage and no injuries.
Absolutely. No loss of life, no serious injuries, so... Chief?
Chief?
Well, after the tanker incident, as I just described, I said, "Whatever could top that." And Mother Nature whispered in my ear, "Oh, Chief, you jest." One of the most terrifying things for both the Police Chief and myself, there were, for a period of, oh, maybe a little less than 24 hours, areas of the town we could not get to. And that was a problem, a huge problem. And that's just something that he and I are not used to doing. You call, we come, and there were areas that we couldn't get to. So this was really significant. Reporter said, "Well, didn't you follow the plan?" I said, "There's a plan." We had ten minutes. We didn't have five days, we didn't have four days, we had ten minutes to figure out what we were going to do. And it just speaks to the professionalism from... for all the citizens that helped us and the workers in this town, every single department chipped in, and we all should be very proud of them. You know, someone said, "Oh, I saw it on TV with the governor," and I says, "As my bosses know," that can be a bit irritating to me because we have jobs to do. But one of the best things that I found was my neighbor left me a note, it was a very nice little note, handwritten, because I put her insulin in my refrigerator, and I got a warm loaf of bread out of it. And that's what means the most to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, if we're done with the briefing on the storm, we have one other... I'd like to introduce our, going to be our soon newly-minted police officer here, Kyle Robbins. He's on your, in your agenda packet this evening. Kyle's actually going to be the 35th police officer to bring us to full staff. That's Deputy Chief Tom Gagnon's position that eventually percolates down to the patrol level, and that opening is going to be filled, we hope, with Kyle, with your approval tonight on the consent agenda. Kyle comes to us from the Walpole area, but he's now living in Harwich. He's working as a special police officer in the town of Wellfleet, has been from the beginning of the summer. He's a graduate of the Reserve Intermittent Academy up at the Plymouth Academy, and he's got a degree from Westfield State College in Criminal Justice with a minor in Psychology. So we're very excited and pleased to recommend him, recommend you appoint him as a student police officer to start about a week prior to the Plymouth Police Academy in October.
Now, welcome, Kyle.
Thank you.
You'll see that the cross you're going to have to bear now is, we said, tremendous... we're taking this for granted, how we respond to emergencies. You know, because this go over years, and we expect everyone to work well together and everything just... most towns, you know, what a privilege to take that for granted, that it's going to work, solely because you guys do such a great job, so it's amazing to me.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment, or we've... Just, Norm, quit using probable. Robin, please.
Robin Kelly, Cemetery Administrator. We had a significant hit to all the cemeteries. For people that don't know, we lost over 400 trees in our combined cemeteries in the town. Island Pond is still closed. There is a barricade up that says, "Do not enter." That doesn't mean lift up the barricade, move it, drive your car in, and then close the barricade, or leave it open. Bicycles aren't allowed in there. Tomorrow, we have the Department of Corrections going to come in and clean up the rest of the debris, but it's still hazardous in there. So I would appreciate it if people do not come into Island Pond until Wednesday. It should be clear to go. All the other cemeteries still have debris on the ground, so please proceed carefully. The DPW will not be able to pick up all the debris right away. We've already taken out 416 trees. So we have a number of tombstones that have been overturned and that have fallen, so be careful with your step when you're at the cemetery. Thank you.
Anyone else for weekly briefing?
You know, Larry, if I could, just, I wanted to just kind of echo some of the comments made. I think the two chiefs did a outstanding job of kind of commenting about just organizationally that we were a very strong organization. I think the primary focus was public safety, making sure people were safe. The second focus was make sure we get the electricity back. To get electricity back, basically within 36 hours is, I think, pretty good. I do want to just compliment Eversource. They had, I think, four crews there the night of it. They had 340 people on the ground the next morning, which is part of the reason why we were able to turn things around. I have been kind of working on the golf course, and I thought, just earlier in the meeting here, I just want to make sure, you know, we've been... actually, surprisingly, we had the beaches open almost throughout the whole thing, which is kind of amazing. And we went and did the rail trail. I think it was Sunday morning to make sure that we had that brushed off and ready to go. I think those are two of the main tourist attractions. And one was the golf course, and a fair amount of people have, I think, starting to realize that the golf course is closed. We had about, I think it was 200 trees that fell down or have branches, and we're concerned that we don't want people to go if they're going to hit a ball into the rough that they go when they have a tree that could potentially fall on them or a branch fall on them. So we do have tree crews in there. We had tree crews in there over the weekend. So as soon as we got some of the other priorities addressed, we started cleanup at the golf course on Friday, so we are well underway. And I had, I was down there today for a certain period of time. We do anticipate that the course will be open this Thursday for nine holes, and then Saturday, we should be back and basically... we're going to call it hazard operation because we won't have all the branches and everything picked up, as Robin kind of alluded to, but we will be open hopefully for full service on Saturday. But just, I understand that people probably don't understand why we're doing that, but we can't have crews working and cutting trees and people trying to golf in between. I mean, that's just not, not safe. We have been in touch with the insurance company, and they're comfortable with the approach that we've taken to that.
Good. Anyone else for week?
Hi, Jenny Hewitt. I'm the director at Brooks Free Library. I wanted to come and say thank you to the selectmen, the town administrator, finance committee, capital outlay, and ultimately, the voters of the town for approving our generator at town meeting last year. It was installed this... we didn't know, we've been planning for this, but not a tornado. So anyway, it was installed this spring, and without that generator, we wouldn't have been able to be open. And I think, you know, as you all probably sense, having open institutions in town really provides a sense of normalcy for people and a place for people to come together and share their experiences. So we put it to good use. We opened early on Wednesday and Thursday, and the place was packed. We had our open Cape connection was up, too, so we had internet, and that was a huge draw. More people, I think, today have generators, or might know someone who has a generator or can go two towns away to a friend's house where they have power, but the internet was a huge draw, so much it kept bringing our access points down. We were going around every hour and unplugging them, you know, powering them, power cycling them for a few minutes. So anyway, I think that... so that was great, that we had the internet and we were open. And the other thing I wanted to say is while we wait to see if the federal government is going to declare a disaster and... which would come with a disaster recovery center, and I'm already angling for that in Harwich because, you know, we've been involved in that effort for about 10 years to have libraries host disaster recovery centers. It's such a natural partnership with our reference function. So anyway, I've talked to some people at the state level about that. You know, if we get it here in Harwich, that means our residents don't have to travel to Yarmouth or some other town, they can come right here. So if the state, if the federal government doesn't declare disaster, there's also a possibility we could get a state resource recovery center, which is basically a scaled-down version. But it's also possible they may not open that. So I've talked to the county emergency management director, so we could create our own, some kind of resource, you know, a physical thing with different agencies if we can, or if not, just information on what services are available from different agencies. I don't know if you all are aware, but if you're a food stamp recipient and your power is out for an extended period, like obviously in this storm, but anytime really, you can be reimbursed for the cost of the spoiled food up to the amount of your monthly allotment. When we posted that on Facebook, it got almost 4,000, reached almost 4,000 people in the first 24 hours, and now it's getting close to 7,000. So it's... that's the kind of thing. People are hungry for that information, so one of the things we did was we established a page on our, on the library's webpage, which is brooksfreelibrary.org. And under the reference department, you'll see a link for the resource recovery, disaster recovery resources, and so look for that. We're going to, it's a curated list, it's not, you know, everything that's up on social media because we're going to check it out first. And there's some good information up there, and we'll be adding more content as people let us know, and hopefully we get one of these other federal or state resource recovery centers. But they're not going to have the local information, like about the DPW waiving the brush fee and things like that. So we still will need this local page. So we started that, and we'd ask, you know, people to take a look and also check back frequently. We put the date and the time on there, so you'll know if you've, you know, it's got any new information on there or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else for weekly briefing? If not, public comment? You want... I'm not going to, I'm not going to hear you tonight.
Pardon me?
I say, "I'm not going to hear you tonight." I think this is the fourth time you've given us the same message.
It's about the wrongful death by Harwich Police Department of my father.
Right.
And anyone listening in the past couple of meetings, it's carol dot Anderson at USA dot com.
Okay.
This is unfair.
We have a full agenda, and I'm not going to...
And you promised on the 15th that the town administrator, Christopher Clark, would get back in touch with me, and he has not.
I'm informed, I'm informed that I'm going to move off, that he's tried to contact you, but he doesn't have a proper phone number or email address.
That's because an unlawful eviction occurred three times from the Harwich Police Department, and my brother, who's now cut my phone...
I'm not going to go further tonight with this.
I can see why, because you don't want the liability, and you don't want the public to know this in the face of the disaster management effort, which I commend as well. But you have to understand, the Lord does work, whether on the wings of an angel, riding through a tornado, but He does work.
Okay, that's enough for tonight, though.
I'll continue to pray for this town.
Okay.
But I do want justice for my father, and I want my mother to survive. Under the circumstances, the police are doing nothing. They've threatened me with arrest, and they say a 209A that my brother got out on me on behalf of my father, which Judge Welsh of Orleans issued wrongfully because my dad never showed up for that hearing.
That's enough, or I'll ask you to be, I'll have you removed. Let's change it. Mr. Rainey.
Thank you very much. I am very proud of the Harwich Police Fire and the whole town after this past week. I was here for Hurricane Bob. It was a piece of cake. This was something else. So I want to thank the town. Okay, now I'm here to request to have the President, Francisco Tavares, the Island of Brava, in the Cape Verde Island. He's called, he used to be a mayor. Now, after the President Pedro Pias left, they started calling each individual island a little president, and then, of course, the big president. But we have an opportunity now, like I say, I'm grateful fixing roads and stuff maybe, but this is something new to me. One of the... I want to read this, if I may, okay? It says that, "One of the main reasons President Francisco Tavares, Island of Brava, Mayor, has to visit Harwich is to build on relationship with the Cape Verdean descent community. He knows that there is numerous Cape Verdeans descent on Cape Cod, especially in the town of Harwich, Dennis, and Falmouth. Most of their families immigrated to the United States from Cape Verde in the late 1800s. They were fishermen, workers, cranberry vogs. They visit, this visit is also the opportunity to connect with their descendants and build up a strong relationship with Cape Verdean communities on Cape Cod. President Francisco is a young mayor who knows the importance of culture, exchange, and endeavoring to promote them. He is currently working to preserve Cape Verde culture, especially preserving local traditions. Cape Verdeans has many historical links with various cities in New England that have a vast Cape Verdean population. Examples, Boston, Brockton, Pawtucket, Providence, and New Bedford. Why he chose Harwich in his next visit Cape Verdean community? During many years, there used to be hundreds of Cape Verdeans working the cranberry vogs, especially in Harwich. By visiting Harwich, he intends to exchange Cape Verdean descendants to know their heritage, history. Another reason for this is to have the opportunity to develop culture exchange between the two communities. It will be, it would also strengthen the contract, contact among the two nations. Cape Verdean authorities and their related agencies are actively engaged in culture exchange... exchange activities. By promoting cultural exchange, it will help mutual understanding social backgrounds of each nation on language, customs, and cultural tradition. Also, he is proud to recognize the hard work and contribution that the Cape Verde community has provided for the city of Harwich and all Cape Verdean communities in Cape Cod. I would like, myself, Angelina Chalaka and Brenda Collins, we're working on this hard. We're going to, we've invited him to come to Harwich, and we're hoping that on August 28th, it's on a Wednesday night at 9:00, at the community center, we would love to have him there. We'd like to have the selectman do a proclamation or something like that to invite him to Harwich. And I think this is a great honor for Harwich.
Let's, let's work together. We'll, we'll draft a proclamation.
Okay. So that's what I'm here for mainly. I, I hope I've tried to explain it shortly and to say why he's coming. In fact, I'm supposed to be there tomorrow, and I'm not. I'm here. But I will be there in May, and hopefully, I'll get to see him while he's here. He's here for two weeks, and he's given Harwich one day.
Fantastic. And we'll work on something together. I'll be in touch.
Now, if you have any questions, I'm sure that I have Dino or one of my assistants here, Angelina Chalaka and Brenda Collins, and we can answer whatever you might ask or want to know.
I think, I think our action is to move ahead and be sure we get a proclamation and invite him here. We shall do that, because it'd be an honor and happy. Any other comments, questions?
Just like to say that I'm excited for this. I think this is great for the town of Harwich. I did have an opportunity to speak to Mr. Ranio right after the tornado. I was on a ladder with a chainsaw, but took the time, and he explained it for about a half an hour. And I think this is going to be great for the town of Harwich. And I appreciate you putting this together.
Can we delete that part of being on a ladder with a chainsaw?
I'm in shirt.
Okay. Thank you, John. That was great.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, I just, I just want to reiterate, it's, it's a great honor for this to happen. I mean, there're Cape Verdean populations throughout the New England area. This is a recognition of basically 200 years.
Well, I agree with you. I think it is an honor. We're doing the programs at the Monmouth High School, Cape Tech, and we, the three of us, and we teach them the culture and the history, and they love it. And we're having a great time with it, especially me. I've always wanted this. And it's somehow, I guess it was coming with hurricane, this tornado we just had, or whatever you want to call it. Because up till two weeks ago, I had no idea this was even going to be coming. The Dino, who lives in West Yarmouth, he met me at the Cape Verdean Culture last Saturday, and asked me, how would I like to have the president here? I said, when? That was my answer. And so that's why we're here.
Well, let me, let me start with Ed. He was going first and was going on.
It was actually interesting, a couple of weeks, maybe four weeks ago, I was, one of the members of town was going through, cleaning out things in her house, and she found a letter that her husband had received, and it was a letter talking about the visit of folks from Harwich, England, to visit Harwich, and what an important thing it was. And, and it was signed Margaret Thatcher by the Prime Minister. I find the, the visit of the president of Cape Verde equally important to our interaction with our namesake town in England, because of the strong, strong Cape Verde community we have, and the importance the Cape Verde community has meant to Harwich. So it's, I think it's a great honor, and I, whatever way you would like, all of us, I think, to participate, we'll be there.
Steve?
I was just going to, I was going to say, is there some way we can help in a reception for the president? Is there something we can do to help create a, you know, a welcoming reception?
Well, if you, if you don't mind one second, Brenda, I'd like a little help on this one. Like I said, as far as fixing a hole in the road, I could tell you just how to do it. And I was, I can't praise these guys and call them electric enough. I like to bring one thing that came up to me, especially to the police department, fire department, during the storm, on my street, there's three people that are ready to go to hospital. We couldn't get an ambulance down there. We had six trees completely block the whole road. They came down to work on it. They cut one tree. They had to leave an emergency, which I understood. I talked to them. I told them that we had two generators running, because I didn't want the backlash to come in if they were touching the wires, because that happened to us on Hurricane Bob in the campground. And I never forgot that. They said, no, as long as you don't get neither wire. I went out there with my neighbor and my son, literally cut the road, saw a path, saw an ambulance who would get through. That I could do. This is something new to me, but I'm loving every minute of it. And with the two here, like I said, I'd love to have them-
Answer that question.
Yes, your help would be nice. It'll be at 6:00, the 28th of, of August. We'll be having a lot of tables set up, so that people will sit around tables. We will have an interpreter, but he, the president of Brava will address the, the group, and it should be very, very interesting. You probably know that of our Cape Verdean community, about half come, hail from Brava ultimately, and half from Fogo. These are the two westernmost leeward islands, and two of the most hard-hit as far as famine and drought went back in the day. And the Brava fleet, as a matter of fact, is very, very famous. It was a packet bunch, it was a, it was a fleet of packet ships. Back when the United States was changing from sail to, to steam, these packet ships were available for practically nothing. And the Cape Verdeans are excellent sailors, and so bingo, there was an entire fleet that went from Brava to New Bedford, and back and forth and back and forth. And we're greatly blessed that the president of Brava will, will be here.
Okay, good. Thank you. Michael?
Just, if we could, Chris, could we please post this as a, as a board's selectman meeting, so we can all be there? And then, if we can get something on the website, and maybe through the Chamber of Commerce, to notify the community of this event, so that people, people have the opportunity to go?
Yep. Glad you, uh, listen. Now, more? If not, we'll move on. We'll, we'll continue to work with you on this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public, you don't have to leave.
We've got a lot of work to do, believe me, now and then. Having the function, we want to have it so that building is overflowing.
Okay.
Because I will be spending the next three weeks going to all the different Cape Verdean clubs from here to Wayham, and New Bedford, Boston, Taunton, Brockton. We're even going to try to, I'm going to meet with the board of health, and so that we can see if we can have finger foods, Cape Verdean finger foods. So you can really get a taste of Cape Verde. But that's another job that's going to have to be done, that we'll be doing that. But we need all the help we can get, and that's just what I'm here for.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? Now, we'll move to the consent agenda. Steve, do you wish to read?
You bet. Vote to confirm the recommendation of the Housing Committee to appoint Joe McParland, Jr., as the Housing Committee's representative to the Community Preservation Committee. Term to expire June 30th, 2021. Vote to accept the resignation of James Joyce as full member of the Planning Board, effective July 31st, 2019. Vote to accept the gift of $10,265 from the Aura Gaylord Aruth Trust, and authorize the chair to sign letter. Vote to confirm the recommendation of Police Chief David Gilmet to appoint Kyle Robbins as a student police officer, effective October 7th, 19, 2019, with an annual salary of $44,657.75. Approve the Democratic and Republican Town Committee lists of election workers.
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Move then to new business. And before we start, let me just comment that we have a full house, which means that we probably have some passionate people in the audience on one or two of these subjects. My reminder is, is that I ask you to remember that we're all residents of Harwich, we're all neighbors. You can speak your, your opinion, but we will request and demand that it's a respectful discussion. And once a point is made, I also ask you not to make it two or three times. Even I, after one time, or two times, I get the point. You don't have to keep repeating that. We have a full schedule. So with that request, that we, we're not the federal government, we can be civil and have a great discussion and debate. And that's what we're about tonight. So let's move on to the first one. There's a noise violation by Embers. Michael, you have?
Yeah, I would move that we turn this to administration and appoint Town Administrator Christopher Clark as the hearing officer.
Let me just, for the sake of the audience, read it. Noise violation, what Michael wanted to move ahead on is noise violations by Ember, submitted by the police chief. Schedule a public hearing and designate Town Administrator as hearing officer. And Michael's made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye. Just, if I may, for the public, this is how we've done it in the past. We can do two processes. One, we could do in here, which is a courtroom setting, where everyone gets sworn in. Or in the past, we have given it to Christopher Clark. And Chris, that is open to the public?
Yes, it is.
So if the public wants to go, you go, you sign in, and you can, you can go there. The police officers are generally there, and everyone's interviewed, and then Chris will come back to us with a recommendation.
Thank you, Michael. In fact, the hearing will be, it's published in the paper. So if you want to find out when the time is, and location, you can, you can get that information. Second item is revision to Harwich Inn and Tavern weekday entertainment license for outdoor entertainment. I request a Monday through Saturday, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is for outdoor entertainment. Chris, you have a, any additional information on this?
I think just by way of overview, the board had given a limited amount of license, and they said, the board said, if 30 days without any incident, could he then approach the board about extending it to the full week? So he is here to accomplish that decision.
I'll start with you, and then I know we have some of butters that have some concerns.
I just wanted to mention that I had put in two applications, one also for Sunday afternoon, but it didn't get put on the agenda. So if the board pleases, we can just do it all today. Otherwise, I'll have to get that particular day on our next-
You need to refresh my memory, because I believe Sunday is up to the state. Is that, is that not correct?
I did get the state license for indoor, but town of Harwich limited to indoor, not outdoor.
I, I think I'll stick to the agenda.
That's fine. I just wanted to-
As we go forward. Do you have any other comments on your request?
I probably will after the speakers come up.
Okay. I'll turn it then to those speakers. This has been in the packet, and I know I've gotten some emails about this, which I also put in the packet, and we have another letter. So I guess you want to defer to what the objections are first. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Let me ask you to turn it around. You're making your request. Why don't you go first and tell people what your request is?
Okay. I've come in looking for entertainment license, and I received indoor, and I received Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, 4:00 to 8:00. Since I've had that, I've had no incidents, no police calls, nothing. Volume has been where it should be. And I'm just requesting the additional days to equalize Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, instead of, what's the difference between a Wednesday and a Thursday, if that's what I need to have?
I'm sure you know that, I know, at least I've gotten some emails and, and it was letter to the board, that there has been some concern about the noise levels.
Of my establishment?
Your establishment.
No, I'm, I'm sure people will do that. And maybe I can, I'll read my written statement regarding a lot of that. In the past, the police have been notified if there's a disturbance. They have not been notified of anything like that, probably because it was not loud enough to, to call them. And because of the actions of neighbors who have come over to my place complaining about that, and I'm not talking about neighbors who live right next to me. These are neighbors who are across Route 28 and some a quarter mile away. It is, because of their actions, I'm saddened to figure out that it has nothing to do with sound. They just don't want my business to be there. And I, I put a tremendous amount of money, effort to beautify the property. I run a respectable business with no issues or troubles anywhere. And I just urge the board to grant my license and not to support the harmful cause of a few. And there are many more residents in the area who support respectable businesses on 28. And I don't see why I would not get my license on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Saturday, and even on Sunday, if I've had no violations. I'm not even spending the hours beyond 8:00 in the evening, where much of the town is at 10:00. And that's why I'm here. And again, those who have complained certainly know how and have contacted the police department. They didn't do it this time because they were not, it was not loud enough. I tested every time that someone plays, and I go across the street, and I don't hear it, and I say, we're at the right level. And everyone has a good time. And there's no issues there. But people have to come and complain in order to justify, because it's a he said, she said thing. The police department was never notified, which is the way it's always been done in the past. And I just feel I should be able to get the license for the rest of the days.
Chris, is, like you wanted to-
I just wanted to, Mr. Chairman, there was a person that stopped by the office and asked to have read into the record his concern. I just want to make sure we do that, since we said we would. Mr. Sebastian Mudry of, and I apologize if I got the name wrong, 54 Smith Street, stopped by with a strong concern regarding the issuing of the revised license for Harwich Inn and Tavern outdoor amplification music. He is unable to attend this evening's selectmen's meeting and wanted to convey his message to keep the current licensing, and please do not increase the time and the days.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who should speak up?
Good evening. Mary Albus, 77th Smith Street. My neighbors and I don't want to see Mr. Sukales's business fail. Actually, the opposite. We're, we're happy with how he has beautified the, the area, made the pool nice. The grounds are nice. It, it looks great. It's great for West Harwich. But we can hear the music, and we've established before that, where you might not hear it at the end of Mansion Street, there's a very strange wind corridor that occurs in West Harwich. And there were several occasions this summer where, on the strong southwest wind, we could hear the music. On July 19th, I did walk down to Mr. Sukales's establishment, just to ask him to turn down the music. And I thought that that was being neighborly, that I, I could have called the police, and I decided, I don't really want to do that. I don't want to bother the police. They have, they have a lot of things to do that are more important. So I walked down, and I went out to the pool to, to look for him, and I couldn't find him. And I found him inside, and I just asked him to turn it down, and went and sued, or I don't want to get into a he, he said, she said. But it was a very unpleasant experience for me, where Mr. Sukales was trying to follow me home to hear if I heard the music. So I sought safety at a neighbor's house. So while I was there, I did witness a violation of the entertainer using two elevated speakers- So while I was there, I did witness a violation of the entertainer using two elevated speakers. And on May 13, I believe, the board set his probationary license at one speaker and one amplifier. There was one amplifier that the entertainer was using, but there were two elevated speakers. And so I just ask you to consider that, that I don't think he's met the terms of his probationary license. So I would ask that you not extend his license to six days a week or seven days a week, because he didn't meet what you set for him to do. Thank you.
Hi. Paul Norton, 68 Smith Street. I'm about roughly a quarter of a mile from there, directly across the street from this young lady here. I haven't heard any music at all there, unless I go there. That's all I can say. This is nothing. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Hey, what...
Yeah, just wanted to speak regarding, this is Alvis's comment, regarding her visit to me. I didn't follow her. I led her out so that we could go to see how loud the music was. When we crossed 28 and got onto the other side, I asked her, "Can you hear the music?" And he goes, "Is he playing?" And I said, "Yes." And she said, then I said, "How can you hear it a quarter mile away if you can't hear it there?" And she said to me, quote, "It rises over the trees and comes there." I kind of find that kind of hard to believe, but we could not hear it across the street of 28. Certainly, when cars come by, you can't hear anything, but we did not hear the music. And both Bob and her, both, when they came over, went to their homes to hear it, because they said they could hear it in their home, and we could not hear it there.
If we have a little more comment?
Bob Connie, 5 Mansion Street. You can hear the noise all the time. I called the police on 28 about the noise. Thank God, right after I called, skies opened up, their music stopped. Forty-five minutes later, the police came, and I explained to them. Last Tuesday, I went to the police department because of an issue that happened following Friday. I got the worst phone call a father wants to hear. I went out to dinner with my wife. I'm at Sunday school, having dessert. My daughter calls me, she said, "Dad, you got to come home right away." There were people with orange shirts in front of my house, taking pictures of the house and everything. I get into the car, drive home, and they're already gone. So I didn't know who they were, what was going on. It ended up being his boys from the bar in front of my house, after the issue with Mary, blaming me. My daughters are scared, stiff. I was going out of town for three days last week. I went to the police station to tell them about a harassment thing against him, and they said they would take care of this. That's all I know. They haven't. They're scaring my family now, and that's not a good tactic.
First of all, I'm sorry for someone taking pictures in front of your home. It has nothing to do with me or my staff. My bartenders and waitresses are schoolteachers in the town of Harwich. They are respectable. I don't know who's taking pictures in orange shoots, because our shirts are blue, if you notice them there. So it has nothing to do with my establishment. And so I apologize whoever did that to him or what they were doing for that. The police never had come to me with a complaint. They did come to me when he filed one of harassment. And the only harassment was when he came to my place of business, while I'm open for business to complain. So I don't know where the complaint was on that day. The police never came and spoke to me about any noise violation or anything like that. And we do not go and take pictures. I don't want anything to do. I have a business to run. I'm busy. Whatever he's talking about, I have no idea. It has nothing to do with our establishment.
Any questions from the other board members? Michael?
Police chief's here. Chief, are you aware of any phone calls or noise violations?
I don't want to say 100% either way, but certainly none at the level that we're experiencing in Harwich Board. So if any, there would be one. But I can't, I would have to check the log. I haven't had a chance the past week.
Understandable. Second question, Larry. I saw our forwarded email today, excuse me for not speaking loud enough, pertaining to the one speaker, two speaker.
Right.
And I believe you looked it up?
I did.
What was the finding?
We don't list one speaker or two speakers in the license itself. That may have been some of our verbal discussions, but we don't have that, per se.
Can I speak?
Sure. Use the microphone.
Thank you. I checked that out in the license too, and you're right, it did not make it into the written license. But as part of the meeting on YouTube, the May 13 meeting, it was part of the motion that you put into the motion, one speaker and one amplifier. And I have that link. I have it on my phone. But I know it didn't make it in there, and I tried to get the meeting minutes, but was told that they're backlogged right now. So I realized it didn't make it into the written. But I would hope that if I were on a probationary license, I would listen very carefully to what the selectmen told me about what I should do and what I shouldn't do with my probationary license. Thank you.
And I would just like to add that if I wasn't playing it loud, I could have had five amplifiers and 100 speakers. But if I'm not disturbing anyone, I don't know that makes an issue. And it was not on my license, but still, we're reaching for, reaching for things in order to get this denied to me today. But I, again, we were not playing it loud. Very respectful, very respectful.
I would just comment for myself, and I think for all of us, we certainly want to see you stay in business. The question we're having is, should we continue the status quo at the moment and let the season play out or not, basically?
Right. And since my conception, there has not been a police report, no policeman has come to me, which I assume they would do if there was a call, a complaint against me for loud music. They never came down, and we shut off at 8:00, and we're very respectful.
And I would say that's an important criteria, but that's not the only one that will...
No, no, it is, right.
Will influence our decision.
No, no, I do. But I think that's a, basically, it was a trial for me, and I didn't have any violations. I didn't violate any noise violations.
Yep, got that. Michael?
No, I just want to comment, and for me, if the board had a conversation and told you one speaker, I do agree with her that you should have one speaker, whether it's on your license or not.
And we'll make it one speaker.
Okay. And then I would just add that we had, I've had several conversations with neighbors or people in that area, and I have not, none of them have experienced the loud music that they did in the past. And I appreciate, certainly, he asked us in the beginning not to treat him based on the actions of others, which I took to heart. And I was involved, and Mary, I believe you sent it to me, in an email chain that was sent to the board very early on in this. And in that email, it was one person's account of what happened at his restaurant. And then there was at least a dozen people in that email. And three or four of those people, he was tried and convicted in the email chain and weren't witness to anything. So I do believe that there is an email chain and a group of people talking, and some of the problems are being caused by that. I responded to you on that, and you mentioned to me that we'd talk about it tonight. But certainly, an email chain going around about one person's complaint and others finding him guilty is not a fair process, in my opinion.
Any other comments, Don?
Yeah, I'm going to give a slight counterpoint to this. I've got an entire basement full of sound reinforcement equipment. I've done designs for four or five theaters, I've done my church. I can assure you that with the same amplifier, adding more speakers creates more dispersion of sound. It's absolutely axiomatic. You can ask anybody that's got a surround sound system if it sounds the same as an oral system with one speaker. It doesn't. So you have to be careful about adding speakers, because that changes the cone of sound that comes out, and it throws a wide dispersion of sound. That's a fact. So whatever we do tonight, and I'm sitting on the fence about, because it's not like we're throwing a loud cold. He's got an indoor license, he's got three days of a regular license, but whatever we do tonight, it should be on the license if we don't want to have more than one speaker. Because too much history goes in meetings where we say one thing, and it doesn't get down on a piece of paper, and then it's memorialized incorrectly. I mean, we've done that before with locking up liquor on a Sunday in certain establishments. When those things go away, you're dependent on the people who actually were participating in the meeting to have recollection. It's got to be memorialized. So whatever we vote, it better have something on the license.
Ed?
Yeah, well, I agree. And I think we should have had a minimum tonight, if we do nothing else, issue a new license with the original voted conditions on it. As to the issue about whether or not, if you can't hear it across the street, you certainly can't hear it further away. In the many years I was involved in this neighborhood and the clada, the former clada, there were numerous times where my wife and I, in our nightly drives down to West Harwich, would pull up across the street, turn off the radio, open the windows, listen, hear nothing, drive three blocks away, further away, do the same thing, and you could hear music. There is, there are some funny geometrics to that neighborhood where things bounce, and, you know, so it's not, it's not a truth to say that if you can't hear it across the street, you can't hear it further away.
Steve?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, of all the people that I've spoken with relative to this situation, I don't think any of them has an intention to try to harm your business. And there's sort of an undercurrent here of back and forth between people. I think they're just genuinely concerned about their neighborhood and their ability to enjoy their neighborhood. You know, whether there was a police report or there wasn't a police report, the impression I got from these folks was they were trying real hard to just come and talk to you and not file a police report. So I don't think there's anything malicious or ill will here. I think these are people who want you to succeed, as we do. You know, we want to have viable and successful businesses in town. But, you know, and of course, I wasn't part of your discussion, so I really can't comment on the discussion. But, you know, one of the challenges for a business owner, obviously, is to be a good neighbor, and maybe even go the extra step to give people the comfort they need, that you care about, you know, their concerns.
Well, and I agree 100%. It was the, I guess, the conspiratorial aspect of all this, where they're all calling each other, trying to get strategy on how to defeat this, where if there's not a noise at your home, then, but it just seems like it's a conspiracy. And what I realize is, my reason for going out to their home is to actually hear the noise so I can make adjustments to the thing. There just wasn't any noise when I went to their homes. I never got as far as going near the corner of North Street and Smith Street where Ms. Alvis lives, because I couldn't hear it across the street. So I didn't, and it's very low, so I don't know how anyone could hear it back there. We weren't playing loud. We have one person just playing, and I don't have bands or anything like that. And, but my concern is also to make sure that that's the case.
I appreciate that. Okay, one last comment, and we'll reach an end to this.
Bob Connie, 5 Mansion Street. Three weeks ago, I went over there to ask him to turn the music down. He turned, he told the guy to turn the music down, and they did. I walked out the door, he met me at the driveway, he crossed me across 28, looked at me and said, "You're a piece of shit." Walked back to cross the street, and this is just how it happened. So he can talk stories, he's a troublemaker, and he's scaring my family.
I, no, don't respond to that. I don't want to carry this discussion any further, because we're not talking about personal issues. We're trying to...
We're not talking personal issues.
Going forward. I, I think you've had your say on this. We've got that. I also think that, as I think Michael and Steve and everyone said, that we're all becoming attuned to Facebook and chain emails, so we don't buy conspiracy theories very quickly. We've kind of learned that lesson. I entertain a motion. My inclination is to favor a continuation, play out the season. It's actually, from all the reports I hear, it's going well. You know, there's, if there's any noise complaint, it's been minor, and it's going in the right direction, big improvement over what it was. I think we could play that out and come back again next year after we've had the experience. We could modify the license for one speaker so it agrees with what our discussion was and go from there. But I'll leave it to the board to make a motion. Michael?
I'm going to move that we approve an outdoor entertainment license for Harwich Inn and Tavern from Tuesday through Saturday, from 2:00 to 8:00.
Is there a second?
With the one speaker?
With the one speaker and one amplifier.
So you're increasing it two days from 2:00 to 8:00. Do I have a second? If not, I entertain another motion. Don?
I'd like to move that we just alter the existing license to designate one speaker.
Is there a second to that one?
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Michael's opposed, and I'm aye on that. We'll play this out, and we'll see where it goes. Thank you for the discussion. Next on the agenda is the Pleasant Bay Watershed Permit, 2019 Annual Report. And Carol, I think you submitted a book. I'm hoping you have summarized it for us.
Yes, I will be brief. I know you have a very busy agenda this evening, so I just thought I'd make a few comments. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Carol Ridley, and I'm here as the coordinator for the Pleasant Bay Alliance. And as you may recall, back just about a year ago, a town meeting, 2018, the town meeting approved an intermunicipal agreement to pursue a watershed permit with the towns of Chatham, Brewster, and Orleans. So Harwich, Chatham, Brewster, and Orleans share the Pleasant Bay watershed. And that application was submitted to Massachusetts DEP and approved, and a watershed permit was issued to each of the four towns sharing the Pleasant Bay watershed in August of 2018. Now, the purpose of this is to assist the towns in their efforts to remove nitrogen from the Pleasant Bay watershed and thereby meet the regulatory thresholds or total maximum daily loads for nitrogen removal in the bay. There are 19 regulatory thresholds for nitrogen removal, and this is a requirement under the Federal Clean Water Act. So this watershed permit assists the towns in a couple of ways. It, first of all, provides a method by which the town can get credit for the substantial efforts it's making, along with its, the other member towns in the alliance communities, for the nitrogen removal activities that are taking place. So the Phase 2 sewers of East Harwich, the residential fertilizer controls that are part of the plan for the town, you now have a method of obtaining credit from Mass DEP for those nitrogen removal efforts. Also, there's the benefit of priority status for state revolving fund financing for wastewater infrastructure. And also, that includes non-traditional methods, financing for non-traditional methods other than sewing. It does provide a method for getting credit for the fertilizer controls that the town is putting in place. It also provides forbearance from Massachusetts DEP coming forward with any enforcement orders against the town because it's out of compliance with the nitrogen regulations. So there were a number of reasons for pursuing this watershed permit. It has now been in place for one year, and we promised we would come back to you as the Pleasant Bay Alliance, the organization that coordinates this effort on behalf of the four towns, and report how things are doing. We also are required, and actually, you also, and the other member towns, are required on an annual basis to submit a report to Massachusetts DEP under the permit, and also to the Cape Cod Commission, because the Cape Cod Commission had to sign off on the targeted watershed management plan that is at the core of the permit. It basically spells out all the measures the towns will take. And that had to be certified as being compliant with the Cape Cod Commission's 208 plan, which it is. So both of those entities have to receive this annual report. So we put that report... So we put that report together. I wanna thank Mr. Clark and the Health Department and others who assisted with the information gathering, Heinz Proft and, and the technical consultants for the town, who assisted us with gathering the information. So it basically reports the actions that Harwich and the other member towns have taken during this period of time, this first year under the permit. And just to give you a little bit of perspective on that, over the 20-year span of the permit, Harwich has agreed to meet its responsibility to remove 4,400 kilograms per year of nitrogen from the Pleasant Bay watershed. That is roughly a quarter of the entire amount that needs to be removed. The, um, the other amounts are shared by Brewster at 13%, Chatham at 23%, and Orleans at 39%. In the first five years of the permit, Harwich is responsible for 2,672 kilograms per year, which is like 85% of the total amount removed in the first five years of the permit, and that's largely because that's when the Phase Two sewers are going into effect. We acknowledge in the report, if you've noticed, we did make a note that there is some consideration at this point having to do with the timing of the Phase Three sewers. So that had been scheduled for years six through 10, but we understand there are discussions taking place which may alter that in some fashion. So we just noted that in report, and as these discussions continue, we can add more detail in the later phases of this annual reporting process. So, um, so this evening, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to review the report, which was in your packet. Happy to answer any questions. Mr. Clark has provided us with a, a letter that we can submit with the report on behalf of the town, and just wanna make sure that you are comfortable with it going to Mass DEP and the Cape Cod Commission.
Thank you, Carol. Good job, as always, and, uh, and good job for Harwich. We seem to be moving ahead in a-
Doing great, absolutely.
I don't wanna get into a contest here, but how do we rank with our other Pleasant Bay communities? Are we, are they holding, are, are they holding their end as well as, are they as good as we are, Carol?
I'm glad that you brought that up, because, no, they are. They're, everybody's, everybody's meeting the targets they set. But what's interesting about the permit, so it's structured in, in four, five-year increments, and in different five-year increments, one or other of the towns is doing, is removing more because it may be when their sewers are coming onto line or something like that. So all towns are meeting their stated goals within that first five years. So everybody's doing what they said they'd do, I can put it that way. But it just turns out that in this first five years, Harwich accounts for the largest share of removal, because that's when you plan to do it.
Right, right.
Any other questions for Carol, comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And our action tonight, then, is, we don't have to, we need to vote on this-
I think that-
I think that would be fine, sure, yeah.
Vote to approve the letter.
Approve the annual report.
Okay, do I have a motion to, Don, do I have a second?
I move to approve the letter as written.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And I just wanna thank Alan Thompson and, and Dolly Howell, who are, are representatives appointed by you to the steering committee for their time and dedication. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna say, Carol, really just outstanding in this whole thing.
You wanna go to the mic so it's actually on to the record?
Shoot.
We're not easy to crowd, Alan.
Say that again?
Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to go on the record to, kudos to Carol, who's been doing this, what is it, 20, 20, 20-plus years, 22 years, something like that?
She started young.
From the beginning. I, I have to tell ya, I don't know what keeps her going, but whatever it is, we keep pushing. Thanks, Carol, and all of you.
Thank you, Alan. Next on the agenda is a, uh, basically a report, discussion by Recreation and Youth Commission, their recent change in rules and regulations. And we have a discussion, we have a, we actually don't have a, a decision to make on this, but it was such a popular item, I thought it'd be good to bring it to the board, John, so you can just bring us up to speed.
How do we have no decision made?
Well, they've done it in their public hearing.
We have to approve it.
We have to approve it?
We have to approve it.
Okay, take that back, then. We will hear it and make a decision. Don?
Good evening. Just a quick overview of how we came to this point. Back in October of 18, we had a discussion on a posted meeting regarding regulations for dogs on the beach. At that meeting, there was a discussion and a motion to extend the current policy, which ends Labor Day, to extend that same policy through September 30th. On the 26th of February of 2019, we had a public hearing. Approximately 30 people attended, good discussion, back and forth. I believe everybody in the audience was against the proposed change. There was a discussion about a possible compromise. The, the, the hearing was closed. At our March 26th, 19 meeting, we brought this, the discussion up again, and there was a motion made to adjust our proposed policy change. Instead of extending it through the end of, end of September, every day, we changed it through, so the only change would be Saturdays and Sundays through Columbus Day from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30. Monday through Friday, there'd be no, no ban, dogs would be allowed at all times. So that's where we are as of right now.
Any comments from the, uh, thank you, John.
Hello, David Sadowski, 734 Queen Anne Road, Harwich. At that open meeting, I asked the following questions. They were all answered in the negative. Will the beaches be guarded? No. Will there be gate guards selling passes to go to the beach? No. Will there be daily passes being sold during that time for beach use anywhere? No. Will there be anyone checking for stickers? No. So what we have here is the local resident taxpayers, beach sticker buyers, resident beach sticker buyers, are going to be, to lose out when there is no gain. What, what is being gained here and why the loss? Why, why are we, uh, losing out on this recreational privilege, which you've all come to enjoy, all the dog walkers, all the people who were at that public meeting were in agreement? I spoke to Eric. He, he mentioned at that public meeting, all the email comments, or, you know, the greater majority, almost all of them were positive to leave the regulations alone. I don't know why they're being changed. I, I need to know what is being gained here for what we're losing.
John, you want to just, uh?
So how we got to this point was, there was an issue last September at the beach.
At Red River Beach.
At Red River Beach. Somebody, the beach was crowded, it was a Sunday in September, a beautiful day, as we tend to see more and more of. And to back up a little bit, I have checked with the chamber to see if we're seeing, it's not like the old days. The Cape doesn't roll the sidewalks up on Labor Day. You know, we're busy, the beaches are busy. You go to the beach in September, Saturday and Sunday, you're gonna have a hard time getting a parking spot. So, and that is obvious by going and by Eric, who works Saturdays, going down there and taking a look. So there was an incident, dog came over to a lady's bag and relieved himself or herself, himself, in the lady's bag. Dog was loose, kept walking, owner didn't. So that's where this came up. Over the years, as everybody who's been on a commission or a committee, bought a selectman, whatever it is, you're approached in the supermarket, at breakfast, at the ballgame, about things. And you don't automatically jump on it and make, and request a proposal, change to the proposal or the regulations. This one here did, you know, that was something that I thought should be brought back to the commission, and it was brought back, and it was addressed by what you have today. So the beaches are more crowded, you've got a lot of people there in September, there's no doubt about it. We are probably one of the only towns on the Cape that allows any dogs anywhere near the beaches or the parking lots. And they change between Labor Day, one town, and that, excuse me, I don't know which exactly it is. One is September 15th, and Brewster is October 15th. No dogs, beaches, or parking lots. Okay? So that's, that's where we came where we are.
Just for, just so I understand it, currently, uh, the dogs can be on the beach, Red River Beach, before nine o'clock-
Correct.
And after 4:30.
Correct.
In the park, in the parking lot, in the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with, yeah, I, I understand that. And that's from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Correct.
And your change is to extend the, the Labor Day deadline to Columbus Day?
To Columbus Day, no do, exactly, from nine to 4:30.
Same time, so-
Just on Saturday and Sunday.
Just on the weekends. So that's, that's, that's the point of contention, are the Saturday and Sunday increasing that for that one month, one month period?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just, so it's a fairly simple change. I just wanna make sure I understand it. Steve?
Might be simple, but it's quite emotional. How many complaints did you have? Just the one, you know, in a bag? Or are there numerous complaints from lots of people saying that they have problems with dogs on the beaches?
We don't have numerous complaints. There have been complaints. We don't get as many, obviously, from Labor Day through Columbus Day 'cause we don't have the staff there, so people don't know to call in. But like John had said, the reaction comes from the increase. This is my 14th summer, and in the last five years, I've seen a huge increase in Sept-, especially September, how many people come to the beach, especially the weekends. So that's why this compromise was, was, came about, 'cause the weekends are the ones, the beaches are fall.
Were there people specifically asking that you extend this out? Is there a large group of people, are there complainants that are saying?
No, there's nobody asking specifically for this change.
So why are we doing?
Because of what I just said, because-
They haven't talked, they still have the, without TV show yet.
There's, there's just as many people on the beach on a weekend in September as there is right now. So it's the same kind of, there definitely is. I go down every Saturday.
Okay.
So I don't, yeah.
Is that it, Steve?
You know, the, the other question I'd have is, you know, a large portion, unfortunately, a large portion of our beaches are private. And many of those people let their dogs run out-
Yep.
And they run over the public beaches. It just, this seems like overkill to me.
Okay.
You know, I think, yes, it's a, it's a good thing to have control and make sure that dogs are on leashes. You know, I'm even a little questioned whether, you know, keeping them off the beach in the summer is, is the greatest idea in the world. I'm a dog lover, so that's probably obvious, but, uh-
And so am I.
But, uh, you know, if we're not having a lot of complaints, if there are not a lot of people coming in and saying, "This is disturbing my time on the beach," I don't understand why we're extending it.
Well, we didn't have a lot of complaints about smoking either, but we banned that this, this year.
That's a totally different situation.
Okay, let's, let's move on, Don.
Yeah, I'm gonna follow through on what Steve was saying, because I, you, you and I have talked about a lot of things through the years, and one of them is, I like to define a problem if you're gonna try to come up with a solution. And I'm not real interested in what the complaints are year-round. I'm interested in understanding what the spike of complaints from Labor Day through Columbus Day were. If there were specifically a numerous amount of them, I'd like to know that. I called the Board of Health just to see if there were any health complaints, and there weren't. So that would bring it back to reckon you. The reason I'm saying this is, uh, for a couple of reasons. It's, it's still the town's beaches and the town, and the town's people that, that get to govern them. This was not done through a hearing, this proposed change. This was done under old business on an agenda. I've got it right in front of me. There was no advertisement, there was, it's just an old business on an agenda. As a matter of fact, there aren't any minutes for any of your meetings since March.
That's right.
So, I, you know, if people are gonna participate, they need the opportunity to participate. And the final thing is, because this, this really matters, I mean, if you're gonna penalize people who are actually trying to do the right thing, because we went through this in the early 2000s, too. People who don't care about the law or rules are still gonna go ahead and use that beach, I guarantee it. The people that you're actually denying the access to are the people who wanna do the right thing and wanna follow rules. I don't know, I, I'm having a tough time understanding this as anything other than, "Well, there was a bank robbery in that bank last month, we should close all the banks." This is not about a proliferation of complaints. And it was sure as heck not done as an advertised, two-week-in-a-newspaper change of policy.
Okay.
I asked the town clerk.
I was gonna respond, I read the minutes, so I don't know what-
Mr. Chair, that was, we read, that was a publicized, posted, public hearing. We read the public hearing notice at the meeting. I have the, the agenda right here. Discussion, duh, 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 duh. Discussion on day changes to dog walking in Harwich public beaches on the Town of Harwich rules and regulations. That was read into the record at the public hearing. So I, I don't know, Don, where it went, but it was, it was there.
Was it advertised as a public hearing? I think that's a key phrase, in the newspaper?
Yep.
It was, so we had, Michael?
Then why is it under old business?
I, I think you're referring to the March meeting where they voted it, Don. There was a February public hearing. It was advertised, it was on the website, the minutes were there. I think several people in this room were there.
Yeah.
There was lots of comments made. So I saw it, John, Don didn't see it, I saw it, thank you. And if I can continue?
Sure.
I'm also a dog owner, and I also don't see a problem. I certainly respect the Rec. Commission and the Rec. Director for, for wanting to make a change, but I, and, and for going through the process and putting themselves out there. But one complaint, I just don't see the change. And I, and I do agree with Eric. More people are here in September and October than ever before. I am, I'm in the retail business. I've, I checked with Chamber of Commerce's today. I checked with Inns and Bed and Breakfast that allow dogs there today. There's a lot of people that come to the Cape with their dogs in September and October because they can. So respecting the residents, and it is the residents' beaches to, to, to Don's point. But we do get a lot of visitors in Harwich because we allow dogs.
My name is Tom, and I'm a resident here for the last 35 years.
Pardon, you wanna add it?
All around resident for 35 years. And I walk my dog every day down the beach, not on the beach, but in the car park. The reason for that is, I'm, I've got a bit feeble, and I'm not able to go to the conservation because my dog is a small dog, and there are coyotes in there, and there are ticks and everything else. And it has been my life, every morning at seven, between seven and eight o'clock, to go down there. And I, it, it really gives me a lift in the morning, it makes me get out of bed. So this is just another aspect of it that has to be taken into consideration for elderly people. And I meet people down there with dogs, and we have become friends. And it's an outing. So that's all I have to say.
I'm not sure, are you gonna speak for, against the results of the Rec. Committee?
I'm gonna speak against.
You too?
I'm against, Mr. Clark.
I'm not sure you're needed. It may be that the board is, my sense is the board is come to a mind. No, no, I mean, I think we're- Let's see, we need to take an action, and it looks like the action is we're gonna deny it going forward. Someone wants to make that motion, we'll- Sure.
Well, one of the reasons why, um, I'm sort of, I'm in opposition to this is one, you know, like everybody else, I can't really see the problem. But also, you know, my wife and I, we walk our dogs Labor Day to Memorial Day at Bank Street Beach, and a good portion of that time, we do it going from Bank Street down to the Jetty and back at six, at sunrise every day. But as you get into the spring, we, that, that end of the beach is, is always blocked off because of the blowers, so we sort of head the other way and get a shorter walk. The nice thing about being able to walk, starting in- The nice thing about being able to walk, starting in Labor Day on the beach with your dog, is it's still warm enough to actually wade in the water with your dogs, whereas you wait till Columbus Day, it's getting pretty cold. And, and that's, you know, part of the joy of being a, a dog owner and living in Harwich, so.
Can I just present ninety signatures of people that were.
You sure may, you sure may. You wanna give it to the town administrator, we'll put that in.
I work hard getting these.
I just wanna ask John, John, if I may ask you a question. Getting the sense that the board's gonna deny this request, is there anything else in the, so it's not broad, was there any other changes made?
No.
Okay. So, I would move that we deny the request from Recreation and Youth Commission to change the rules and regulations not to allow the dogs on the beach.
A second.
A second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on then to.
Thank you so much.
Chris, you want to start discussion on tornado-related actions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things that we're looking for this evening, and I'm gonna ask Carol to kinda join me on one piece of this. Just one part of it that I wanted to, when we had the tornado, obviously, Mr. Chairman, you were very helpful to have me call and, and you were able to, nice enough to call around in an emergency, which I think that's what the intent of the law is, in an emergency, to, to get a sense for the state of emergency. I would like to actually recommend that the emergency, now that we have an officially convened meeting, that we confirm the unofficial, if you would, discussion of the board, and have the state of emergency be from Tuesday, July twenty-third, at approximately one PM, to Sunday, July twenty-eighth, at one PM. The reason for that is the state resources pulled out on Sunday at one, so I think to match up to that probably makes a little bit of sense. So, one action would be to do, have that. I don't know if you wanna take these one at a time, or?
I do.
Okay.
I do this. Is there any discussion on the request to save emergency?
Yep.
Don?
I have to say, I mean, I have not spoken to the town administrator since a week ago. Not once, not gotten an email, not gotten anything. We should have had a posted meeting, under an exception to the open meeting law, under exigent circumstances, sooner than this. Because we've been flying without authorization for nearly a week now. While I'm in support of this, that doesn't negate the fact that the communication here has been horrible, and we operate as a town administrator, former government. The Board of Selectmen promulgates policies that are implemented, you know, by the town administrator. The fact that, I mean, I don't know about you guys, I had people asking me a lot of questions, I had no answers, nothing. This is the first time that I've gotten an overview of this.
Okay, please, Steve?
Through you to, to Don. Were you contacted by Larry?
I was contacted by Larry, and that was good for the moment because it was right next to the incident, but we blew off five days.
Well.
And we should have hosted an emergency meeting.
I, I, I would say, you know, Larry, Larry took, took the reins, I think, in a very effective fashion.
I agree.
He commuted directly, communicated directly with Chris. I think staying out of Chris's way, trying to get things moving, just like we stayed out of Link Hoover's way, and the Fire Chief's way, and the Police Chief's way, because they know what they're doing. You know, I, I was more worried about us, you know, involving ourselves to an extent that we could delay things rather than make it work well. So, I, I, you know, my, my experience, I guess as opposed to yours, was, was a good experience. And I think Larry did a terrific job in communicating what was going on. So, I'm, I'm pleased with it, so.
Michael?
I gotta keep a lot of my comments until we have some sort of debriefing on this and figure out what went right and what went wrong. Certainly appreciate the call from you, Larry. I think I heard from you twice during the, two, maybe three times during, I did get more updates from the Fire Chief than I got from anybody else. We, as elected officials, get asked a lot of questions. So, though I agree with Stephen about staying out of the professionals' way, which I think we've all demonstrated that we do, we are getting asked questions as elected officials, and I think that we owe it to the public to have those answers. I asked a week and a half ago, two, no, two weeks ago, on the, or whenever the fire, fire tanker, the fuel tanker spilled, I asked in our last public meeting that we appoint somebody in the town to work with the neighbors and the property owners that are surrounding it to give them real-time information. Because they all have suffered a loss, now they've suffered two. And on a tidewater community like this that relies on tourism, they've all lost a fair amount of business at this point. But, I guess my point is, I didn't find the communication to be great, Stephen, whatsoever. I did find that two other towns on the Cape were sending me emails with updates on what were going on in their town. But, in this town, I received no information. That's, that's just a comment. On, as far as this process goes, and I guess I would ask Carol or Chris, is, is what we're doing and what we did based on a telephone call legal? Because I know there was a meeting in this building that we were uninvited to, only Ed and Larry attended, though three Dennis Selectmen showed up and took a vote in this building at that same meeting. So, they felt the need to do it. Is what we did legal? And is what we're doing legal? And I guess I would ask Carol.
Can I just, on one point, Michael, let me comment. We didn't. We didn't. That meeting we had, there was no vote taken in that, it was informational. And, and that one's on me. We, I got an email from Sarah Peak, who had organized that meeting, requesting that we limit our participation to two Selectmen because of, she was concerned about open meeting law, and I think, Don, you said, may not apply, but also because there were all the towns involved, the size of the room. And so, I, I followed her request on that, and, and Ed as Vice Chair and I as Chair decided we'd be the two there. So, that, that one's on me.
So, the other question is, is this action legal?
Well, that's, that's not, that's good.
Yeah, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman, it is, you know, in, in an emergency situation, to get the Chairman of the Board, it certainly wasn't gonna be convenient to try to convene a meeting of the Board of Selectmen during that period of time. I mean, it just, it, it really was just not gonna be convenient. So, to have you, and, and I appreciate, you know, Mr. Chairman, you and I were together many times during that. I presume that you had relayed the information to the other Board members. If that didn't happen, and they wanted formal communication, then, then I apologize for that. You know, my primary focus, as I indicated earlier, was to make sure that we had, the residents were safe, make sure residents had electricity, and then to begin the, the cleanup effort. So, that was the primary focus, was to make sure that the residents of Harwich were taken care of. I think that's the role of the town administrator, in, in any community, as it is with the other professionals, that, that oversaw the response to the emergency.
Ed?
Yeah. I guess Michael's asking is whether your declamation of a state of emergency is legal. In, in my training as a mayor in California, and as a Chairman of the Board of Selectmen here, is, quote, the, I guess, chief executive, executive officer under the emergency protocol that was, I believe, promulgated by FEMA many years ago and adopted by all states and municipalities that the, in a case of emergency, the chief elected executive officer is to declare the state of emergency, and because it's typically not a professional person, turn it over to the deputy emergency preparedness officer of that, that town, which in our case, I believe, is Lee Culver. And from thence forward, until the state ends, or until it's canceled by a higher power, the, it's the responsibility of those officials to make the decisions on what steps to take in meeting the emergency. And that's what I urged Larry to do.
That's been my experience in my, in the past, that we've been designation, but, Don?
I wanna clarify this, because Stephen brought up an entirely different line of subject matter. I am not talking about making any decisions, not talking about interfering with anything. I am talking about the need to go on to Facebook, onto the Fire Department's site, onto the library's site. This is the modern age. You can send one email out as a status update to everybody. It's an emergency. It is an exception under the open meeting law. We could have, and we did, in the mid-two thousands, when we had the thunder snow, a meeting that was convened within a day after the Chair had declared the emergency to take necessary actions, including deficit spending actions, that was done within twenty-four hours after the declaration. We neither had information, and we've waited a week to actually get to this point. I'm, I'm not saying that, as a matter of fact, the Chair did call me two or three times. That, that part of the communication chain was absolutely fine. But, I do know, for anybody who's gonna buy into the story about somebody being too busy, the, the Friday meeting was actually scheduled around the presumption that there was gonna be a DHI meeting. It took the sanity from the town administrator from Yarmouth to say, hey, guys, you really planning on doing this? When we all have cleanup to be involved with? And that was the night before the meeting. There, there seemed to be no problem with taking two or three hours in a clip for this or for that. I'm talking about five minutes to let us know what was going on, and I'll stand by that.
Michael?
I asked a question, it was answered. Thank you.
Any more discussion on?
Just for the Rec., Mr. Chairman, I had a, in my last community, I had an ice storm and a tornado that I dealt with. And we handled this the same way, and there were no repercussions for doing it after the fact. So, in my opinion, there should be no repercussions for doing what we done.
You know, we have several issues here, once, this action, once communication, but just go ahead and take action on this. If I can get a motion?
I move that we declare as a designated local emergency pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one.
Wanna add the dates, Chris?
Yeah, sure.
To run through, from July twenty-third at one to Sunday, July twenty-eighth at one.
At one.
Okay. Second? Second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes? Okay, next on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there's this very specific vote that the board needs to take that was included with your packet surrounding this declaration.
Okay. I need you to go, what's that?
That was the next one that was in your package, was the.
Okay.
This is for the actual reimbursement.
Yeah, okay, if you wanted to make that motion.
This is actually your authority to deficit spend. This is your authority to declare, this is your declaration.
Okay.
So, it's all wrapped up in one. And I worked with the bond counsel to, to make sure that we had the exact wording that we needed, because I don't know how we're gonna pay for it. So, the dollar amount that's in here can be changed later down the road, when you know what the total expenditures are. But, the wording here with regard to if you had to borrow the money, it really is very specific to what's been included here.
Okay.
Isn't that for the next motion?
Thank you, Carol.
The dollar, deficit spending?
She just said it was wrapped up into one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, in, in terms of, the, the town has a local emergency, so I just wanted to do this under the state law for the.
This is a long, does someone care to read this? This is a long motion. Ed, you want to?
I move that we approve, we vote in approval to incur liability in excess of appropriations under Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one. One, approval of the chief executive. Aye, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen, Town of Harwich, Massachusetts, certify that a meeting of the board held on July twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, the vote attached here, here too, as Exhibit A, was unanimously passed, which vote appears on the official record of the board in my custody. Signing, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen, certificate of town clerk, aye, the town clerk of the Town of Harwich, Massachusetts, certify that the signature of the clerk of the board, Selectman, appearing above, is the genuine signature of the person who executed the certificate and who held such office when the certificate was executed. Three, approval of the Director of Accounts. In accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one, the general laws. Aye, the Director of Accounts of the Division of Local Services of Massachusetts Department of Revenue. The Director of Accounts approve the million-dollar emergency appropriation for costs associated with the town's response to the July twenty-third, twenty nineteen tornadoes and sheer wind event. And that's, will be signed by the Director of Accounts.
So, it's, I'm sorry, it's Exhibit A?
It's Exhibit A. I don't see Exhibit A.
Yeah, I just pull it up.
Oh.
That's a long one.
It's the long one.
That's what I thought we had just, that's what I just thought we had voted.
You got a page to go.
Okay. Exhibit A, vote of the Selectmen, Town of Harwich, Massachusetts, Board of Selectmen, vote to declare a major disaster, incur liability in excess of appropriations under Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one, and to express official intent to reimburse with proceeds of a borrowing. Voted, the Board of Selectmen declares a major disaster in the Town of Harwich resulting from the tornadoes and sheer wind event of July twenty-third, twenty nineteen, which event poses an immediate threat to the health or safety of persons or property. Further, voted that the town administrator is authorized to expend a million dollars to pay costs related to the town's response to the July twenty-third, twenty nineteen tornadoes and sheer wind event, including but not limited to employee overtime, debris removals, contractual assistance in emergency repairs to public buildings, and infrastructure and costs incidental and related thereto, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one of the general laws. Further, voted that the Board of Selectmen intends to propose an article for the next town meeting to provide funds for these costs by raising in the tax levy, transferring authorization, a borrowing and issuing bonds or notes thereof, or otherwise, or any combination thereof. Further, voted that the Chairman is hereby authorized to send the attached proposed letter to the Director of Accounts of the Department of Revenue, seeking authorization to deficit spend up to a million dollars under Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one of the general laws for the purposes described above. Further, voted, the Board of Selectmen expressed its official intent pursuant to Section one point one fifty dash two of the federal income tax regulations, Title twenty-six, the regulations to reimburse expenditures paid sixty days prior and any time after the date of passage of this vote in the maximum amount and for the aforementioned costs associated with the town's response to the July twenty-third, twenty nineteen tornadoes and sheer wind event. The projects with the proceeds of bonds, notes, or other obligations authorized to be issued by the town, the bonds or notes shall be issued to reimburse such expenditures, not later than eighteen months after the later of the date of the expenditure or the substantial completion of the project or such later date the regulations may authorize. The Board of Selectmen, the town hereby certifies that the intention to reimburse, as expressed herein, is based upon its reasonable expectations as of this date. The town treasurer or his designee is authorized to pay project expenses in accordance herewith pending the issuance of reimbursement bonds and to amend this declaration. The declaration is made solely for the purposes of establishing compliance with the requirements of Section one point one fifty dash two of the Treasury regulations. This declaration does not bind the issuer to make any expenditure, incur any indebtedness or proceeds with the project. This declaration and the above votes shall take effect from and after their adoption. And I only.
Second.
Only, only wanna say that possibly in the line that read the town treasurer, or her. Designee.
Also, in the, in the second further voted, town administrator is authorized to expend, I think it should say, up to a million, because it says that in the next. Down. And is there something that we should state somewhere that any funds that we receive from the state into a federal government will go immediately to first reimburse what we've already expended? will go immediately to first reimburse what we've already expended? Just trying to make sure that, you know, if we're going to spend money here and we get reimbursement, that reimbursement goes to this.
That's going to the general fund or something. Is that a question, Carol, that, you understand the question?
Well, yes. While you could change these votes, they were prepared by bond counsel and they were prepared specifically if you needed to borrow the money. So you certainly can make any changes that you like, but you're not required to borrow any, you know, a dollar amount. It does say here that, I think in one of the votes, it does say that...
It says up to.
Pardon me?
It does say up to in a following one.
I think that first one could be changed to up to. I think it matches up.
That was his motion.
Okay. Ed, you okay with that?
I don't want to stop the motion.
I'm still saying.
Is there a second?
I did.
Okay, is there any other discussion here from the audience? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, in terms of, I'd like to spend a little bit of time. I was able to put together, just really before this meeting, the state had asked for, maybe for folks at home, to have a FEMA-declared emergency, we have to reach a threshold by county. They have a county threshold, and the threshold is $9.6 million. So there's a little bit of a rationale to why I've done, there's certain elements to what I've done here. We have asked, and what I have in front of you is the estimated cost, really, for the five days of response from Tuesday, the 23rd, to Sunday, July 28th, for the response efforts, and then restoration at 30 days. We probably will be in that, all of that, maybe a little bit more. In terms of the allocations, we took into account the town administration staff. Joe's been, you know, with me for most of this and helping to continue on. So we have, any kind of hours that are beyond our typical duties are potentially eligible for FEMA reimbursement. Police details for the duration of the event, there's been a considerable amount of details. Details are needed for when the bucket trucks go out to do clearing. The roadways are just really busy. The building department, we have the three inspectors. We ramped up the inspections so that way if people had electrical services on their house that got compromised, we were able to have inspectors at the ready. The town engineer has invested quite a bit of time making sure that he comes out and helps us. He actually helped me this afternoon estimate the amount of debris pile. We are eligible to, at least in my past experience, eligible to get recouped for the debris pile. The town clerk's office, I think a lot of the town staff was dedicated to answering calls regarding various issues related to the storm event. Facility maintenance, we have, believe it or not, the FEMA does not reimburse for anything you would get insurance coverage for. So we just put in for the amount of the deductible. The good news is, very little actually damage to town facilities occurred. There are some, so we are in the process of going through that. On the health inspector, we did ramp up. I think we actually did three or four rounds of inspections on facilities. Any restaurant or anyone that had food would have to be disposed of in that. So we wanted to make sure we keep people safe as the power goes off and then as the power comes back on. So we did have our inspectors engaged in that activity as a result of the storm event. And then we did also look at different departments, and you can imagine, we had almost 3,000 trees that were taken out as part of this event. So they asked me within, you know, the next day if I had a number of, how many trees? I think I answered a lot, because it's just, you know, there's no way we could have a sense for that. We now have a better sense for what those are. Under this FEMA-type of material, we had a contractor in on the cemetery to remove trees. We have headstone repair, as Robin had alluded to earlier, is something that may be an eligible cost. Stump grinding, various sized stumps in the tornado I had out in the central part of the state. Believe it or not, they came out with tape measures, and they actually measured the different stumps. So that is something that they definitely do. We did put in here a recommendation that the new trees, so all the trees that got damaged, that the new trees be put in. The only ones, the trees that we counted, the only thing that 9.6 goes for is public infrastructure. So there was an awful lot of private trees that were compromised or taken down as a result of this event. The cemetery director, we put in some hours for her, for her efforts. Golf, we had laborers working to clean up the golf course. We had a contractor come in for tree removal. I have to admit that we had Meyer's Tree. They had a special machine that came in, grabbed the tree and cut it, and was able to place it down. And then they also brought in a wood chipper. So we were able to, in some cases, make a lot of progress where people thought it would be weeks. We probably will be able to do it in days as opposed to weeks. And the golf, the stump grinding, the total number of trees at the golf course that were compromised that should be replanted are 200. The course closure per day, we have been closed for, anticipate being closed for 11 days. That's $12,000 a day is a typical revenue that we would recover, that we would have. So I did put in that as a potential cost for business disruption. And then limited hazardous play, we're not going to get, everyone won't come out to play golf if it's a hazardous type condition. So we anticipate some revenue shortfall as a result of that. The harbors, which didn't get touched too much, so we just have a little bit of money in there for the initial response and assessment. And then really where we have the most of the cost related to this storm event is in the public trees, and we broke those out into two categories, public way and public property. I thank Joe for kind of getting some of the organization mobilized to see if we can begin to get some initial numbers. The public way, we're still going to have to do more work on that to get a sense for that. But we anticipate that we've lost about 1,300 trees directly on the public way. And when I say a public way, it's not just on the street, but the right of way goes to either side. So it goes in. And then if we wanted to plant new trees, we would put in a request for tree planting. The estimate came from DPW personnel for the installation of new trees. And then on the public property, we've done the same. We estimated about 1,000 trees on public property. That means up at the bowl over here in Brooks Park and a couple other locations in some of the conservation areas, Bell's Neck and areas like that. The public portion of the brush pile, I actually went down with the town engineer. He estimated the total amount, about 29,000 cubic yards of material that has been collected. We did get an estimate, actually we had a gentleman that stopped by today. So we were able to get an estimate for how much that would be to take and actually physically remove it and bring it to a burn facility. So that would be about 145,000. And then I do appreciate each of the departments were asked in a very short order, as I was asked in short order, to try to generate some initial numbers. So the water department was about 30,000, emergency management, 2,900, DPW, 376,000, fire, 53,560, and police, 81,683. All that totals up to $3.2 million, which should help us towards the effort to get the designation. I think the importance of the designation is that if we have the designation made at the federal level, then there would be 75% reimbursement of eligible costs. And I think these costs were targeted, that were, in a sense, hopefully eligible. They were eligible previously. And to see if we can get 75%. More importantly, for the businesses, the Small Business Administration will come in and help businesses that lost a lot of their inventory as a result of the power outage. So having that designation from the federal level, having the governor come down, having the lieutenant governor come down, having the legislative delegation making the case for the need for this emergency assistance will be beneficial for not only just the community, the governmental organization, but hopefully for the residents as well as the businesses in the community as well. So I think it is important to try to obtain that designation, and hopefully this helps towards that effort as Harwich was the, probably the most hardest hit of the communities that were hit as a result of the tornado.
Don?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, now that we're having the discussion, we've had the vote as a whole board for the emergency. The initial designation of the waiving the fees got us to August 6th. That's what the sign said. But it occurs to me that the first portion of that is constrained by not only traveling around, but there's only just so many people that can do some of these things. The 6th has you dangling in the middle of a week. I would feel a lot more comfortable, the 11th gets you through that following weekend where most people would be able to get the dump. But there's a finite number of people that can truck this stuff in. If you're doing it yourself, you got to get somebody to do it. So the smaller jobs are probably going to be the last ones they do. I'd like to move that we extend that waiver until August 11th.
Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have a chance to even look at my house until Sunday, so I'm very sympathetic to that. Unfortunately, I asked that question of Mr. Huber today, and the board's policy is very, very clear that it is a number of days after the incident. Just to report, he did say, and I was down there this afternoon, that the amount of trucks going in and out had significantly decreased. So there is a slowdown. I don't disagree, I just, at least under your policy, as has been voted, right now it does not have that mechanism.
We can always change the policy.
Well, that policy was done when we presupposed we would never see a tornado on Cape Cod. Yeah, I don't disagree with it.
Next comes a volcano.
Please don't say that. Probably, probably.
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 Chris, I mean, we can't change the policy if we...
Yeah, I mean, you could, we could research how that's, we could research how that's done and do that. I think that does make some sense.
Larry?
Yes, Ed?
You know, we can take up and take action on things in cases of emergency, which I think this clearly does, so I'd like to make a motion to waive.
I did. I did, to waive it until August 11th.
Chris, part of this discussion, you know, you've mentioned health inspectors. Are we, and I think in some cases, electrical inspectors have to go out?
They fell under the building department.
Building department?
Yes.
Can we waive those fees? Are permitting our inspection fees on, this is also part of the disaster?
I can find out, Mr. Chairman, at one point, I don't know if Chief has a better number, but when I asked, the number of services were actually compromised on the house.
Yeah.
The people from Eversource said that the number was eight.
Okay, so it's not...
So it was a fairly limited number. I don't know if you had an updated number, Chief, or not, but...
While we're trying to take care of people...
I really don't. I expect that there will be many. I don't think they've, it's like the tree services is only so many electricians.
Yeah.
I do suspect there'll be more. This request was some forethought by Eversource. I appreciated that. They wanted to see if the town would consider making more inspectors, specifically electrical inspectors. A lot of services were damaged, a lot. So I suspect that the electrical inspector or inspectors will be busy in the future.
What's the sense of the board? That's something we could do to help our residents.
Can we do this first and then...
Well, I was going to add it to part of the waivers, but you can't.
This exists already. All I'm doing is changing the date.
Michael?
August 6th, August 11th. My tree guy said six weeks. Why don't we make the date August 12th, because we have a meeting? And then if we decide to extend it beyond August 12th, we can extend it that night again.
Did I say the 11th? I really meant the 12th.
Correct my second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. My discussion was on, do we try to help people that have, I'm just talking about the permitting side, not the work at all.
There's not going to be anything to inspect for a while.
At my house, I did have my service taken off the side of the house by the tree that fell down and took out the porch when they came back by to fire up our block. They, because it was still on the ground and they had to cut it off and so they could fire everybody else up. Unfortunately, after they did that, shortly after, they had to turn the circuit off because it sparked a fire on some brush overhanging some of the lines. And the lineman, who was in charge of apparently redoing our block, then went with his tree crew and went down each line and did a tree trimming before he did turn it back on, which took about six hours. But then they turned it back on, and he came, at that point, he came to the two houses on the block where the service had been compromised. And in one case, because there wasn't a tree laying over it, they reestablished the service on the side of the house themselves. And in my case, I had the service reestablished and called Tom Whelan, and he came and inspected it. And the lineman was very clear that, you know, as a, in the cases where they found this, they were making their own assessments of whether it was safe to reestablish it. And if they weren't, they were compiling a list and filing it, pushing it through to the electrical inspection. Luckily, he said they weren't finding many, so.
Chris?
Just the only thing on that, Mr. Chairman, I think under your previous policy that when you waive the fee, because we're paying these folks by inspection, they're contract employees basically, the board may want to waive the actual, and pay the contract cost for just those folks that were impacted if you wanted to take that route.
Yeah.
Because then that has more substance to it for the electrical inspectors.
Okay.
And for the homeowners.
Any other, what's your sense on this? Does anyone want to do anything or no?
We take them up on a case-by-case basis or a list of every other meeting?
We can get a list from the electrical inspector.
Let's do that then.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I just had one more thing, Mr. Chairman, regarding this.
Chris, before we move off of this now, what's your urgency with me? No, no, Steve, you're signing the quick of boards. So what's your urgency with Steve? I'll see if you're signing this. Does he have to be here 8 o'clock tomorrow morning?
I think if you were to sign it, you could sign it now, and then the town clerk is here. It's just certification on the emergency authorization.
Is it text exactly? Is it typed somewhere?
Oh, it is, Clark.
I don't think.
Yeah, it does need to go to the Department of Revenue to be signed, too.
I'm sorry, but if you're going to put me on the spot. I believe that the language was approved by bond counsel. So in order for it to really be, you're going to change the language on this. I prefer that it would go before bond counsel again and make sure that the language would pass bond councils. I just talked this over with Carol, and it would, if you're talking about the language for the bonding...
What language are we changing?
The up to.
Up to. You changed the language.
Then don't change it.
Then just don't change it.
Don't change it. Just let's just go.
Right, because the only thing is it...
My question was, how urgent is it?
Well, I can't sign it unless, I probably shouldn't say can't, but it would probably be preferable if the town finance director had passed the language by bond counsel since the motion was written by bond counsel. And if you gentlemen choose to change it, I believe that bond counsel should take a look at it before you sign it.
We won't change it now.
Okay.
I move that we revert back to the original language of the document that was previously motioned, because I don't want to hear it second time.
So we'll move ahead with this.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, there's just two things.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, there are two things that need to be executed by the board tonight. One is a cover letter for you to sign, that's in the signature folder. And then the second is the clerk of the selectmen signs the other one prior to the town clerk and then ultimately the director of accounts. So we have those forms in the signature folder, so if you could execute those, that would be greatly appreciated. I just wanted to, the undersecretary, what's your title? The undersecretary of public safety?
Secretary of Homeland Security.
Undersecretary of Homeland Security. Asked if she could have several of the secretaries come out and just kind of have an appreciation for the Board of Selectmen and the employees of the town that engaged in this. From the state's standpoint, I think they were very impressed at the level of cooperation and how the town worked. So it was something. So they have, they're planning on coming out Wednesday at 10 o'clock at the Public Safety Building. We hope to have some of the town staff that was on the ground, that was helping in it. Those are the folks that really deserve the appreciation for their efforts.
So it's this Wednesday, 9 o'clock? So it's this Wednesday, nine o'clock?
Wednesday at ten o'clock.
We are currently not posted and it's too late to do a posting. So the two of us could go.
Yeah. Chris, there is not a document here for me to sign. So. If you have one, great.
Can the chair go? Wednesday?
Wednesday at ten, I, I think I can go.
Wednesday at ten, so if two of you wanna be there.
Wanna join me?
I mean, I'd be happy to do it. Anybody wants to do it, I'd be happy to do it.
I'll be in interviews.
Okay. Steve, you're on.
No, I'm just gonna take my spot. He loves that stuff.
The people that we're gonna be appreciating are actually those people, so.
Okay, Chris.
Just add one last comment in terms of if we, if we don't get the federal disaster declaration, I do want to just kind of publicly thank the governor or lieutenant governor. I think part of the reason why they brought out as many resources as they did, those are costs that we have to pay for the Department of Corrections and Transportation and some of the National Guard folks that came out. So I think they were concerned about making sure they helped the town without having the town incur a lot of additional costs. So definitely a. If we do not get a federal disaster declaration, it, it does have to be issued by the President of the United States has to sign it. That, I believe that there was also, obviously, we wanna make a, a request to the governor's office to see if there could be a state appropriation made. We had the Speaker of the House requested to come out. A lot of these meetings were at the request of the people from Boston or, or Washington that wanted to meet. And we were just trying to accommodate those requests. But they did seem willing to perhaps put some funding to help the town and its recovery efforts. And just in terms of at least the, the two cents that I have, Mr. Chairman, that part of the reason why we're a AAA rated community is that we have reserves. So if we do have to come up with, you know, some money, we can certainly do that. In my experience, the FEMA reimbursements will be months away. So the FEMA reimbursements won't be, if we do get the FEMA, will, will take a long time. So it'll probably go beyond the fiscal year before we see that money. So if we have a special town meeting in November or at the May town meeting, we could certainly attempt to take out a stabilization fund to backfill any of these overages. I am working to try to minimize those overages to the best of my ability, identifying existing funds that could be used. For example, at the golf course and at the cemeteries, there are other funds that could be used. The golf course by itself had about eighty-five thousand dollars allocated for tree work. So instead of doing routine tree work, it will be used for tornado-related activities.
Okay. Ed?
Yeah. Representative Peak has indicated that in, in the past, the speaker has asked for, to come in and view an area in the case of an emergency. Previously, the gas problem in the north, northern part of the state. And previous to that, in Springfield, with their tornado, that he's only done it in anticipation of him putting together a supplemental budget request for a, a good portion of which contains aid for the impacted community. So I think we're, we're very hopeful that that would be forthcoming from the state. Of course, that being said, it'll be, the aid that we get will be couched in the way if we receive any FEMA aid to pay for things that they're, they're gonna want their money back if they've already paid for it.
I don't care where it comes from.
Okay, is that, Chris, is that the end of the discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Michael?
Before you move on, I, I just would like to thank definitely the public safety officials that are in the room tonight personally, as well as everybody else in this town that responded to that disaster and have heard numerous comments on how impressed people were on how fast we opened back up. And this is obviously our summer season where a lot of these small businesses make their money. But DPW workers, working with lines down and trees hanging over them, the, the disaster that we, that you guys took care of, it's absolutely amazing. On another note, everybody that came to this town to help us, I hope that this board supports a letter from administration thanking, I would imagine, a giant list of people with a sincere thank you from the Board of Selectmen for their help. We had Marshfield here, DPW, Situate, DPW, Brewster, Chatham, and I probably can't list the rest as well as all the organizations that were listed tonight. Norm, you gave us a list tonight of the response to the tanker. I would imagine the list is even longer for this. But often, we don't send thank yous. And I think we, we as a town should send a thank you note with our sincere thank you to everybody that helped this town.
I agree.
And I never thought I'd hear myself say this, but you can include Eversource in that. They honestly stepped up to the plate.
We're cool for something. Yeah, Ed?
Yeah, I, you know, when, when this all occurred, after the first, I don't know, ten, ten, fifteen minutes, I, you know, looked at my own situation and I had no clue where to go. So my, in cases like this, my go-to person of answers is always Norm. And I called him. And at that time, you were still at your house, locked in. And it was at that time that I, I got a sense that it wasn't just Harwich Center, that it had bounced down into, it's much wider. And then as to the cooperation, it started twenty minutes after they gave the all-clear when folks in, I think, my neighborhood and presumably every neighborhood around town started, came coming out, looking after their neighbors. In our case, two of our neighbors came out with their chainsaws and started clearing the road twenty minutes after it was over. And then in the ensuing days, various help came in. We got, luckily, they were first down at, around the Brooks Academy, clearing there. And then sixty prison folks swept down our, our street and cleared out yards and, and into chippers and trucks and working, prisoners working with neighbors. And it was, was really a, a, a great show of cooperation of people that you wouldn't normally would ever see cooperating together because they'd never run into each other.
As I pointed out to the governor, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I pointed out to the governor, all of our public safety, but not only public, we all were public safety that day. We all were. Not one of, and I, I know it's the same across the board. I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, but I know it was the same. Not one firefighter said, "I can't come in because I gotta do this or I gotta go home to make sure I'm okay." Not one. They all stayed for at least twenty-four hours. And one firefighter was there for over thirty and called me on his way home and said, "I had no idea my street was this bad." So, you know, we've got some dedicated people in this town. And, you know, we, we, the police chief and myself and the board and the DPW director, you know, we, we kinda get to be the face. But it frustrates me not to be able to have every single one of our police, police officers, firefighters, DPW, highway, water guys, water department, save me. I had a tree in front of my, my cruiser and, and, and back of my cruiser. I called over there and within one minute, I had a loader to get, so I could go to work. But all the workers, we forget, I know we don't forget about it, but the face, it, it, it just means so much to me to know how dedicated they were. And not one said, "I can't come in or I gotta go home." They just did their jobs. That's important to me. And I know it is to other department heads.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what I was saying, I mean, this really extends beyond just workers. I had to get over to Chatham Drama Guild to assess what was going wrong there because it was part of the path is. The tenacity, the grit, the big-heartedness of just the community people. I mean, made me proud to live here. There were people out on the roadways, Route twenty-eight. There were people that were directing traffic around tree limbs. They were just regular citizens. They felt like somebody's gotta do something and they just took control. They knew you guys were going out and doing the real hard stuff. The average citizens here really stepped up to the plate. We should be proud to live here.
On a, on a light note, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I spoke to Mr. Powers, you know, twenty-four hours later, says, "I think I broke some procurement rules." There were two private tree companies working that day at noon time. And I was able to make my way to South Street, both ends, and we could see what had happened. And in both those companies, I said, "Stop what you're doing because you're not work for me." No questions. And they went to work clearing these roads. And, you know, that's the type of people we live with.
I blew my one chance to be interviewed on TV, though. Helping a neighbor with my chainsaw, cut a tree, so I had to come to town hall. I have a T-shirt on, there's holes in it, holes in my, so I look very professional. We thanked a lot of people. Joe, I wanna thank you as well.
Yeah.
Feedback I've got, you did a great job of, of coordinating a lot of the activities. Michael?
I'd like to extend that thanks, because if, if I'm understanding correctly, Joe and Griffin Rider, our town engineer, got the employees in this building, both floors into a safe place and locked the door.
I forgot Griffin, I had the same information.
And then there I was, driving down Fourth Street with all the trees across it. And I get around this tree and it's Joe directing traffic. So, you know, I mean, it was.
That's a scary thought.
If I could just add one thing with, with my partner in procurement, town engineer Griffin Rider.
Yeah, yes.
You guys both look great in orange.
That's very true.
Well, we can't be thankful enough, so we appreciate you. Appreciate the input. Next on the agenda is the, the goals, the town administrator's goals. And I, I put a draft with help and I've taken, I think I've talked to you all and put in some, some input into this. My, my goal in this was to make the goals specific and measurable so we could keep track of what the performance is, what, if we're going where we want. And I also use the finance goals as an example. I also wanted to have the goals have, be practical and have meaning. And so I know we have, this is a case where we have different opinion. In the past, we've had a goal of, of no override and small, we don't even come close to doing that. We've already exceeded it. So this one, I've tried to put in, a goal is level funding and up to two percent with the Board of Selectmen approval, which we have to prove anyway. Now, that may be too, too low, maybe too high. But I wanna have the goals that, I don't wanna put a visionary goal out there. I wanna have one that we can hope to, to, to make. We've also, you know, we, we always have some difference of opinion between the Board of Selectmen, between Board of Selectmen and the TA. And I've added on this to review the goals, review this document quarterly to see if we're moving in the right direction, if we're getting comfortable. I put in some, some thought on this. We've, we have tremendous department heads in the permitting process. Nothing's perfect, however. And I think it'd be a good idea, and I have one of the goals in here, is to measure the time involved and the effort involved in permitting process, to set the baseline so we can attempt to, to do a better job, to, to improve that process and make it quicker and easier for our residents. So I've been trying to put these goals as measurable and also looking forward to what we can do, wherever possible, to improve our town operation. You know, I think we've seen a lot of example, working together. I think the town does pretty well, but there's nothing we, we should always be looking to improve everything we do. And that's, that's my thought of this. So I'll take any, any suggestions, comments, criticisms? Don?
Two things, one big, one small. In general, I, I don't think it's a great idea to rate somebody on the effort that they're involved with as a team. Like, for instance, on the DHY, the town administrator's not the point person negotiating our position. We operate as a team. And, and frankly, that team hasn't always agreed with each other. He should neither be criticized nor rewarded for something like that or the housing trust when there's a committee involved with it.
And I did try to change the DHY, for instance, if you read it, to take that into account, your, your comments before that it was to bring information back.
But overseeing the, it, it kinda misses the point that it's a collaboration rather than a point person.
I can, I can, I can modify that further. I'd try to take a stab at that.
That's the smaller one, but the bigger one, we're still not at the point. And I've talked to each one of you various times touching on this issue. In an effective ratings and evaluation system, you could be rating, I don't know how many. You could be rating eighteen things, but they're essentially, or four or five, without which you can't succeed even if you do all of the others well. This needs a rating factor somewhere. They're waiting.
Steve, what you do is you percentage weight.
Yes.
The results goals and you percentage weight the core competencies.
But we're not there yet. That's what, that's all I'm saying is.
That's what this is all about. This is, this is honing this to reflect what you, what we think as a team.
Yeah, I'm just reinforcing that. It's like there, there are certain things where, where we're thirty percent.
I knew we needed more discussion on that. Once we agree on these, you come back on it.
And while we're at that discussion, I have asked the chair before, they're not entirely disparate. I would like to be able to have an executive session to discuss contract negotiations because all of this is linked with everything else.
Yeah.
One is linked to the other.
And, and I'm committed to doing that. I, I looked at it, we always have a question on executives. My read is, is that I can schedule that. And we'd like to do so probably by our next meeting. There's no reason to postpone it. We can do it before our non-resident meeting. Any other? Michael, wanna speak up? I know you, you want to.
Yeah, this is exhausting. Thank you for putting all this together. And I see you incorporated some of my thoughts in here. I don't know how we're ever gonna agree on this. I've said in the past, right off the bat, the performance management plan for the Harwich Town Administrator, that's not reflected in Chris's contract. It's called goals and objectives in his contract. As far as the waiting's gonna go that Stephen's talking about, maybe we should have a conversation about waiting and each board member should put it in. Core competencies, you know, I would imagine the core competencies should have received a fair amount of points. One thing that, that I struggle with here is goals and objectives for the last four years. Some years, maybe we get fifty percent of them done. Some years, maybe we get sixty percent of them done. Other years, maybe we get less than that done.
Right.
So first and foremost, we ought to call it what it is in this contract because we can't bind them to anything that's not in this contract. And then, and then two, I'm not sure where this form came from originally, but it talks about dates and times, specific dates and times that you want the goals and objectives done. But I see this honestly as a suggestion because this board, good luck agreeing on this. And then we have to get Chris to agree on it as well. So thanks for the effort, but I think there's a lot more conversations that have to take place, starting with what we're calling it.
We do have to get moving, though, to some degree.
We do have to do that.
You can't go halfway through a ratings period and say, "Oh, by the way, the last six months, we didn't want what you were doing. We want this."
I mean, that's, but I can change the title so it matches the contract. That's, I can do. What I'd like to do is, is, is get an agreement on this and then come back and, and just finalize the, the rating on what we, how we wanna rate all these, weigh them.
And I, with the assurance that we'll address, you know, Don's concern about how we wait it, you know.
That's what I mean. We can do that. We can do this and we can come back and do this, give us a start, yes.
There's a, there's another element of this that I'd like to be able to be mindful of. I know that we have the contract, which is, again, why I wanted to have that discussion as a strategy negotiation. But we're, we're so out of whack in terms of when this happens. It's, it's not fair to have somebody who's declared that they're not gonna be in office to do that as their closing thing before they leave and a week later. It's not fair to ask somebody who just came on the board, who hasn't experienced anything, to give a rating. We gotta align this somehow so that there's significant, a body of evidence that we all have experienced together, you know, based on what we've seen, based on the weighting factors and based on what we've agreed to. But in some coherent way where it's not done like right around town meeting. It's insane where we're at.
No, no, we have to do it right away.
No, I mean, the actual ratings, period.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It should align somehow where it, it, it makes some sense rationally that we're all here, we've all experienced something of it. here, we've all experienced something of it, and that we have some sort of coherent input. We've already passed May.
Well, but, no, I mean, Don, in some ways you state the obvious, because last time we had, doing performance review almost when it was.
Time to turn out the lights.
Exactly. So we need to do that.
But we also, at the same time, hadn't gotten the goals established until the fall.
But, Michael?
And to Ed's point, I, I agree, it has been the fall. And to the other point, if you read through the goals and objectives, a good portion of this is Chris's job description.
Yeah, but how well you do your job is really what the rating is.
And I guess we would like him to do his job.
What I would like to do is to, you know, fix, Michael, to your point, fix the title, you know, the, and then get, most of it, vote on this and then come back with the, how we're going to weigh it. Do I need to vote or just move ahead?
I, I think you should move ahead, but I, I personally value, when this discussion comes up, there's two areas that are immutable to me. Communication and effectively conveying accurate information. Those cut across all kinds of lines.
Right.
And they're very important.
Right in it.
I know, but I'm just saying that that, that would be, those would be the transcendent goals and objectives.
Hot, more highly than.
Because it doesn't matter what the subject is, those things matter.
I agree.
If someone's going to make a motion, I'd like to add back in under results-based goal five, engage residents prior to the development of, of the budget to gather information on resident budget priorities. And then I put such as a budget public input session. If we were, if everyone paid attention at town meeting this year, the budget was a big deal. And nowhere in our timeline, other than our meetings, is there really any room for the public to talk about the budget.
Yeah, I had realized that, that I'd taken that out, but that's a good point.
If we're going to vote, I would, I'm hoping that in the two areas that I've identified, the wastewater and the housing trust, that, that gets converted rather than him driving the bus, that effectively implements the decisions made in the area of, because some of them involve town meeting votes, some of them involve committee votes, but whatever it is that's voted, then the effective implementation of it is really what you're asking them to do.
So the wording needs to be changed.
Yeah.
I'll change the wording. We'll, we'll work on it, change the wording. Okay?
Do we need a vote?
We have a motion with that.
Well, eventually we're going to, but why don't you just move forward and ask us to offer the weighting?
Make the changes and?
I'll do that and, and give me your comments on the weighting, I'm going to take a stab at it.
Absolutely.
And we'll, we'll try to wait to get to ask what's important to it, and Chris and I'll talk to see, get, get your input as well.
And you can adjourn, really.
And I'll adjourn it.
And for, you know, to sort of sharpen up our discussion of it, try and agenda it on a day that doesn't come after a tornado.
No dogs.
I'll try probably to do that. Thank you for your dog.
Or the volcano or anyone.
We'll continue this because it's an important item.
It certainly is.
Of where we're going this year. Moving on, then the town administrators' report.
Yeah, and right of the hour, I'm going to keep this brief, I've been up since 6:30. In terms of, I did approach the Finance Committee for Reserve Fund Transfer, which was voted, and I appreciate their support. So they have allocated $50,000. Carol did put it into a town administrator tornado account so we can try to have some money to pay some of the tree contractors and others that have been doing work in the, in the community in a timely fashion. Obviously, the authorization, the deficits, Ben, will allow us to do that too, but it'd be nice to pay for as much as we can initially. And then the second is, I guess this is going to be the last meeting before Sandy Robinson, who's been my longtime secretary the entire time that I've been the town administrator, just has been a very nice person, a very solid employee, and, and really has been a tremendous support to the town overall and to me personally. So I just wanted to say thank you to her for her 19 years of service, and, and she will be missed, and I hope that she enjoys retirement very much.
Well, we, we need to have her come here and give her something to embarrass her before she leaves.
Good luck. Good luck with that, yeah. Good luck getting her to a meeting.
No, actually, Larry's got a really good point. The Selectmen Administrator's Office, we share the, the staff, so, I mean, she's been terrific on the Selectmen side.
I agree, and I think we should give her something, but good luck getting her to a meeting to accept it.
We should trick her, say that on YouTube.
Okay. Okay. Chris, on the, I don't know if we need the progress report tonight, CDM Smith. I, I would ask, and I would like to include in our agenda from, from here on, a standing agenda item at the, at Public, weekly briefing, an update of where Robert Ower's going for the next, I know there's some variability, but this gives direction of where we're going, and I just want to include that as a standing item.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate that. I did talk to Charlie Sumner, he probably will try to come in to a, a certain sequence of meetings, maybe once, twice a month. He was going to plan on being here tonight, but he had some family issues, so he wasn't able. He did, he did write a progress report, but with everything going on, I didn't get a chance to get it into the.
And we'll leave him every time, because sometimes they can be really short, short point, you know, they're on this street, they're on, you know, like that.
To, to that point, Mr. Chair, because I don't want to get boxed in, I mean, there was some information that would lead one to believe that we're not going to be able to finish the entire phase with the two contracts, with the one we've awarded and the one we may award. Before we get to the point where we're presented with a list that's downsized, I'd like to make sure that's part of the discussion.
We need a big discussion.
What are we doing?
That's a separate agenda item.
What are we doing and how much of it are we doing?
Yeah, no, we have to do that pretty soon, but that's separate. I was just trying to get the con, where we're going now. Okay?
So, and to keep everybody up to date, you know, when we were building the high school, every other week, I went over to the high school with Jamie and we did a little filming of the progress. Does anybody want to?
You're suggesting we go to into the sewers and?
Anybody want to volunteer to do a tour of the sewer construction every other week?
No, I'm sure it's fine.
Cindy from the chamber.
I think, no, but I, quite honestly, I think it would be.
An Ed Norton moment.
Okay.
It would be a good.
Selectmen's reports, Steve?
Are we asking for everything else?
Michael?
No, I would, I would, I've asked several questions in the last two meetings, which spanned over 30 days. In lieu of the tornado, I will let it go tonight and not bring it up again, but I'm waiting for answers for about six questions.
And I have those, and I'm going to, I'm going to bring them back. Ed?
No. We don't meet, do we meet next week?
We don't.
No. So the weekend after next, this weekend is the next Harwich Quambay Festival Craft Fair in Brooks Park. I urge you all to attend. We had to cancel Thursday's concert at the Cultural Center, but I will be on again this Thursday.
Thank you.
Don?
Yep, just, just two things. Everybody's forgotten, we had a microburst the day before. It's kind of like the forgotten storm.
I didn't forget. I finished cleaning that one up on this one.
My brother Mike called me. That was the ramp up to the, I'm real proud of the folks in this town because we, we took on a bunch of adversity and we just came right through, and it almost looks like nothing happened, so that, come on down and visit.
I, like Michael, I spent all morning cleaning my, my front yard so it was all ready for its act two.
Okay. Father's mother's journey.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Hey, Norm?
First, I also have.